Yeah, we did. I guess that's your cap.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry you got stuck with this.
Well, it's a lot of stuff going on all of a sudden. Got a lot of things going on here, you know. I forgot what these stupid things are.
I get it. I asked Brandon a couple times if he helped me see how to do it.
Five, six, seven. See, that's the address here if you want to get into it.
Maybe when Chris is here.
See that here? There we go. Look at that. No, unlucky. It's better to be lucky than good, they say.
I'll find out because I want to, I want to look at it. This is, this is something we didn't have to sign.
What's that?
This, when they did the offer to purchase, they put in a PAM investments.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And so they took off that part and John, as John said, they couldn't have that on there. So they took it off, they got it signed, they sent it to me. Now you've got to sign it.
You got that, John? Remember that?
I know you can't read this very well, but what it says is the words PAM Investments LLC shall be struck from the form 689 of the offer to purchase.
So the PAM's owned it individually?
Yes, and they always did. He did that, I think, agent. So anyway, can I have him sign?
Well, they said that he's authorized to sign anything that he feels is appropriate to make his name go.
So it never was an LLC?
And you know why that came up?
They have an LLC. They never put it in the LLC.
You know why this came up? Because I wanted to have the nation papers assigned by the LLC. That's why the issue came up. We got to get everybody in the same group. Because all I said was, you know, they signed it individually, that's not good enough. If it's owned by the LLC, I want the LLC to not be able to sue us. So if they take the LLC off, don't let kind of nation papers. That makes sense? I didn't know you, I'm surprised you didn't know why you flew it.
Oh, I did. I mean, I knew he just, could you want it? And it wasn't in their name.
No, I wanted him to sign it. Okay.
That's what I'm expecting, but I'm here just in case it is.
So we did find that line.
Oh, okay, sure.
Oh, there we go.
We're going to bring in Chris.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, there we go. Hello.
Oh, yeah, we probably should go. We know what it is. It must be more comfortable like the raiding. I don't, it doesn't. We can do it as a one hour. You know, final amendment, if that is.
The public hearing.
Got a question. We have enough votes without it.
Yeah, but amending the budget.
Yeah.
Normally you're supposed to have a kind of interest or something, you know, reason. Yeah, there's money that we're both.
Well, well, that's going to explain what.
It's not important. It's not a problem. It doesn't, but we just don't like to get the ham. I'm not having good votes. If they miss a meeting at the public hearing and, you know, they have reasons.
Because you are going to get a reason tonight. You can't vote if it's necessary to abstain.
But, I mean, if you're opposed to buying the property, oh, no. You know, ironically, that's the issue. You don't want to buy the property and oppose the voting of property and say, so I don't want to vote. And I'm going to get to the heart of it, but that's really what this is about. And that's fine. That's his right. And you just say, I wasn't part of the original decision to buy it. And I was supporting buying it. So you could vote no or you could then swing. But that would be the reason. You don't want to stop what your predecessor started, but at the same time, you don't feel comfortable supporting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be explained.
Yes.
That's what I like.
I'm doing great. Thanks for coming.
Oh, you bet.
You need your neighbors.
This is Scott.
Oh, like the driveway? So long.
He is the most. He's going to be here. He, uh, he, uh, started finishing.
Yeah, well, the whole, the whole.
Finished a thing. So he said.
Well, I'm sure.
It is, I think.
Want to call a meeting to order? Welcome to the Joint Plan Commission and Village Board Meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, or Clerk rather, roll call please.
For information first.
Buckles. White. Peckers. Piala.
Here.
Webb.
The board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's next.
Stigler.
Here.
No, I'm not the only one.
Oh, you want to do the board too?
Yeah, the village board also.
Here.
Here.
Gurecki.
Here. Okay. Open Meeting Law and Compliance Check. The agenda was posted and distributed to all news media requesting notification in accordance with the open meetings laws and posted on or before Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, number five, discussion and possible action to appoint Stuart Buckles as Village Trustee Number Four to fill vacancy created by appointment of Village President. This is an action, possible action of Village Board, simple majority vote of the Village Board. Is there any comments from the Village Board? Do I need a motion from somebody to nominate Stu Buckles for that position?
I'd like to make a motion to make Stu Buckles Village Trustee Number Four.
There's a motion on the floor to, by trustee German, to appoint Stu Buckles to trustee number four. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by his trustee Kalinsky. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We're going to have a short recess to swear in our new trustee. Madam Clerk?
He has the paperwork.
You have the paperwork, Stu? Okay. No drum roll for this, is there? Do you want, do you want him to swear the oath? I guess he doesn't have to. He just has to sign the paper according to the state statutes, but I guess that's taken care of, so. Okay, I'll welcome you to the board, Stu. Another matter of housekeeping here is discussion and possible action to appoint trustee David German as our Plan Commission member. I need a motion from the board to that effect. I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's moved and seconded to appoint David German as a Plan Commission member. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Okay, we're up to citizen comments. Anybody have anything they want to say?
I do.
Okay. Give your name and address, please, to the.
Glory Kurth, S 31, W 25109, Green Valley Drive. I have about four things. First off, when the new trustee was just voted in by this board, was nomination papers or was it open to the public for nomination to be considered by this board? Or was it just by appointment?
It's by the president's discretion. He can pick who.
Okay.
Actually, it's the village.
The village board. They make the final vote.
Okay, so how do, who decides to bring the nomination in?
Actually, public comments are public comments. They're not back and forth between the board. They never have been. You can, you can make your statements, but the board doesn't need and really shouldn't get into a discourse with the public. That's never been our practice.
Okay. I would like to see a change that the board accepts nominations and resumes from citizens of the village for any open appointments, not just picked upon by the board. Second, I've been reading some of the reports, the meeting notes, and I noticed that one trustee has kind of been absent quite a bit. Is there any recourse? It's another thing to take under consideration. Number three, regarding the garbage situation. My neighbors have been contacting me wanting to know what's happening because they're, have been informed by the current garbage disposal people at the dump that we no longer will have the dump, we no longer will have a garbage collection. I think that needs to be clarified to the citizens of the village. And lastly, with the horrific tragic event in downtown Waukesha and everybody putting blue lights on, I don't see any blue lights out there. Could we remedy that? I mean, it has nothing to do with politics between the city and the village. It has to do with giving our support to those people. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments?
Sandy Ham West 230, South 3827, Milkie Way Road. I didn't come with any comments. I thought about making some and then I guess I wasn't going to make them, but anyway, I just want to thank you guys so much for pulling together as a group and getting through the last forty-five or sixty days, holding the village together, and I'm really impressed with what's happened. And I know you guys are all putting in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I want you to know I appreciate it. I will agree that people are concerned about the dump. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once? Twice? Three times? Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the previous meeting minutes of November 11th, 2021. Anybody have any comments on the previous minutes?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as they were distributed.
Is there a second from the Plan Commission?
I'll make a motion.
All right, moved and seconded, approved the minutes from November 11th. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Noted. Okay, discuss possible action to appoint, well, we did that already, I'm sorry, number nine is mute point. Ten, discussion, possible action on Storage Shop USA Kessley, unit number thirteen, plan of operation. Request for petitioner John Kessley for the property located at West 239, South 3899, Big Ben Road, Unit 13, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53189. Tax key W A K T 1351996017 for approval of a plan of operation to purchase and use Unit 13 for personal storage. Mr. Malarki, you want to start this?
Sure, thank you. So Storage Shop USA is a condo development. Permits general business, trades, personal workspace, including offices, indoor storage, and workshops, limited no more than two employees onsite. Onsite retail is prohibited. Customer drop-off pickups prohibited, commercial fabrication and manufacturing is prohibited, and overnight parking outdoors, overnight sleeping in units, and outdoor storage are also prohibited. So on the agenda tonight, there are four applications for plans of operation within this storage development. It's currently under construction. It's getting close to being finalized. As part of the approvals for that, the Plan Commission and Board condition the approval that each of the owners of these condo units would come forward, get their plan of operation approved for what they plan to do and how they, how they plan to use it. So again, we do have four of those tonight. In general, the plan of operation that was approved for the, for the site as a whole includes the use description that I just mentioned. It also allows cars, trucks, vans, and recreational vehicles. And then the general hours of operation are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, unless that's further restricted by the individual plans of operation for each unit. In addition, there's no parking along the north-south driveway, the drivelanes, except in the designated parking stalls associated with the units. And as I mentioned, outdoor storage is prohibited. I guess the only comment I want to make generally about this is that hours of operation is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Most of these that are going to come forward are going to be probably for personal storage. I think there's one on the agenda tonight that's personal storage and working on their vehicles, a person of vehicles inside of the, the unit itself. And so I don't know what you want to do in terms of hours of operation. For personal storage, it may not make any sense to limit hours of operation, but it might make sense to limit hours of operation for, for businesses that locate within these units or for working on things, you know, fabric, not fabrication, but for, you know, power tool use past a certain point might make sense. Again, it's, that's open for discussion. The first one on the agenda tonight is for Mr. John Kessley. The agenda says Unit 13. It's actually Building 13. It's units 25 and 26, so that's what we're looking at a plan of operation for. You can see the condo development plat's up here. There's twenty-six total units and thirteen buildings. He's asking, his plan of operation is simply for personal storage. But I think we should, we should definitely discuss the hours of operation in the, you know, in a general sense for all of these.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. Anybody from the Plan Commission have any comments? Or do we have the petitioner have anything here they want to say? Or you want to speak or?
You should come up and introduce yourself in case there are any questions, please. We just need your name and, and local address or the address of your unit is fine also.
Uh, John Kessley. I have to read the address. It's West 239, South 3899, Big Ben Road, Unit 13. Our building 13 and units 25, 26.
Okay.
It's just personal storage.
You have anything to add to what the planner has brought forward?
No, not really. I won't be in there all odd hours of the night, so.
Okay. Anybody on the Plan Commission have questions?
I do.
Just wanted you to know that there is a noise ordinance.
Okay.
There is an ordinance on outdoor trash flowing around. There is an ordinance on outdoor storage, and I don't know if there's one on odors, but these are the things that people are mostly concerned about neighbors.
Okay.
And so if you can manage to, to do what the city or the village has recommended, you'll probably be fine.
Be no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Dan, you had something else to say?
I do. When we say personal storage, what are we talking about? Are we talking about boats or are we talking about furniture?
Three cars, a boat, and a travel trailer.
I think it's good that we're a little more specific.
Yeah.
Especially if there's going to be fuel in there or anything like that. It's good to know.
Just in the tanks of the vehicles.
Yeah. Folks need to know too that, you know, you're, these are commercial buildings, so you'll get fire inspected twice a year and you'll have to meet state fire code.
Okay.
Do you, anybody else have anything to say? Comments?
I just want to clarify, Sean, is he requesting twenty-four hours on his?
Well, that, that's, I, that's how I have it written into the, to the plan of operation now, but I'm, but I'm asking if that's okay, that's great, but if not, we should refine that.
Well, my comment's going to be about the twenty-four hours. I think that should be limited to say twelve or ten o'clock at night from maybe seven in the morning till, till that time. I mean, the neighbors around there do have the idea that they can run it at three o'clock in the morning and make.
Sure.
Noise and things like that. I guess whether it's working on cars or whatever, I think it still disturbs the neighbors when they're going to do that. So I think if we want to make a general statement for the whole complex, maybe we ought to restrict the hours to something to that effect. And I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, but.
Well, I think if he's got storage there and somebody wants to pick up something in the middle of the night, they're going to be making a hell of a lot of noise dragging a boat, for instance, or hooking it up. And so those are the concerns, and they do do that. I mean, they, that's when a bunch of guys have time to go move things, so.
Yeah, I, I don't see it making a lot of noise though. Not that I'm going to be doing it late at night, but on behalf of somebody else, there's a possibility they might want to hook up and take off at four in the morning, you know, to go fishing or duck hunting or whatever. Not me. I'm a pleasure boarder. I don't do that anymore, but.
But I don't think it's bad during sleep time to have some kind of requirement on there.
Yeah, I don't know what that means, but six, you know, I'm looking for comments here as far as, I can't answer your questions out in the audience. This is a Plan Commission and it's closed, so.
I'm a part of, I'm the developer of that property.
Are you part of him? You want to speak with him?
I own the building until he buys it.
All right, come on up.
Personal use, I wouldn't have a problem with ours. Because how do you tell somebody at their home that they can't work on a car at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night? If it was a business, I could see hours being put on it, but personal use.
It's a good point. I mean, someone's hooking up their boat in their garage at four in the morning, leaving to go fishing at, you know, in the middle of a subdivision.
Yeah.
And so it's not that much different.
Okay.
And it, and it is important to note that it is commercially zoned. And so for instance, we have two plumbers who will finally get a chance to own their own shop. And they don't start work at seven o'clock in the morning. It, it starts a lot earlier for them. And so I absolutely understand the noise and the odor, obviously, not obviously. Those aren't going to be an issue. Most of these are personal use, and it's just like John just mentioned, that's the kind of use it's going to be. But there are some that are going to run their business. Two plumbers, as a matter of fact, they're going to keep their work trailer in there. And so before they get to their seven o'clock job, they're going to be loading up and heading off to their job.
Yeah, I, I think what people are concerned about is at three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And I guess that's, that's what I was looking for hours here. If five o'clock is, you know, normal work hours, I'm not real concerned that that's a problem, but I guess at two, three in the morning, I don't think the neighbors.
Can totally appreciate that. You bet.
That's, that's kind of where I was going with it.
Yeah. Totally appreciate that. We have never, literally, we have not had any issues with the noise issue in the middle of the night, and we have twenty-two of these developments.
And in a residential area or?
Most of them are the buffer between residential and commercial. It is the, personally, it's the best neighbor a resident can have in a commercially zoned area.
Yeah, I agree with you because we, when we put this together with the restrictions, I think that's kind of what we had in mind, but.
But I can appreciate the concerns.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Anybody else? Plan Commission, Board?
So one, one question?
Go ahead.
If we restricted the hours initially, is there anything preventing removing those restrictions later on? So our only power is to restrict per, per unit, correct? I can understand for the plumbing contractor, we'd have the flexibility there. Perhaps we could use five thirty a.m. and ten o'clock at night, something like that. And since the units won't be used outside of those hours anyhow, it wouldn't be an imposition. I understand everybody's anxious to get started, but we do have neighbors who live next door, and I'll tell you, from meeting with them individually, there are some that had very strong feelings about storage and people coming and going, you know, in the middle of the night. So, just wanted to bring that to, to your attention.
Kathy, you got something?
Yeah, another concern I have is that especially when you have commercial vehicles, you've got those backup, we've had issues sometimes where people have the backup sirens, and they go off early in the morning, and that's disturbing the neighbors as well. And so there is some, I think, strength to the idea of having some kind of modification of hours that they use it regularly. Could we not specify regularly and, or some sort of, you know, time limits, so, so it's not, you know, if it happens once in a while on a personal pulling out a boat, no big deal.
Right.
If, if it's a business that pulls out their vehicles every, every day at five o'clock or four thirty in the morning, that's an issue.
Well, I, five thirty, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a problem with that on a business. You know, I don't know that's, that's going to be a problem. I can't believe anybody be, I mean, a plumber though, they know, they're not twenty-four hour call. A lot of times they got an emergency water breaks or something to that effect. You can't restrict them to say they can't leave at three o'clock in the morning. So, I mean, we're kind of in a position here where we kind of, you know, the twenty-four hours maybe isn't the worst idea, because like I said, the personal isn't going to be an issue at three o'clock in the morning. So I'm, you know, maybe we don't need to put a restriction on them. I, I don't know, I guess if anybody else got any feelings on that or not.
The way we could do it for personal storage might be, you know, use from five thirty a.m. to, to say ten p.m. And when the commercial operations come in, like the plumber, we could have the same hours potentially, and then make exceptions for emergencies or other.
Can we stipulate as an emergency in there?
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could do that for emergency calls, that kind of thing, yeah.
That'd be fine, I guess I can live with that.
Not important for this one, because it's just personal storage.
Personal storage isn't going to be an issue.
What does that mean though, hours of operation for personal storage?
Hours of use, hours of use.
So I, so I'm barred from my storage unit for, from these hours every day?
Yeah, and you might be the same for any other storage unit that's got gated entry, that sometimes they don't have twenty-four hour access to them.
Usually you have the lunch code and.
Sometime, yeah, not all operate, but some do operate that way. It, it's a tough question, you know, it's, it's, it's tough.
I can't support putting hours of operation on personal storage.
Okay.
That, I can't.
I lived in downtown Waukesha for sixteen years, and I can't tell you how much we would have appreciated some, some of the businesses not operating, because it was, it was.
Businesses though, not personal storage. That'd be like me giving you hours to when you can come and go from your home.
And that's this, that's this particular owner.
Right, so that's what we're dealing with, number ten here, personal storage.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, and kind of to answer your question, we probably can't come up with a generalization for all of them as they come through.
I mean, we'll know.
Discussion that we're having right now.
Right.
That we'll have to.
Yeah, we got to limit it to this, this, this unit in itself at this point. Are we going to allow for personal storage to have unlimited hours? I guess that's the question, right, Sean?
Right. Twenty-four seven access, if that's okay. Like I said, there's another one tonight that's going to be also working on their vehicles. And so, for the personal storage portion, maybe there's twenty-four hour access, but for working on vehicles, maybe it's limited to.
Coming and going is a different situation than somebody, you know, working on their car all night. So, yeah, I guess that, so I guess we can, need to move on with this one, and.
So have we, have we said twenty-four seven access for personal storage is, is okay?
That's right. Well, we need to have a motion to that effect, so we can.
Can I have one more comment? That, that you do have a noise ordinance out here. I looked it up before I moved here. And, and it does address, I believe it addresses neighbors being concerned. So we do have a noise ordinance, and that's what we're all talking about in the middle of the night, not anything else, so then I'll be okay with it, as long as that, that can be enforced, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion to the effect that, from the Plan Commission?
Do you have a, so we don't go through this, do you have a sample motion, so that you can so move?
The motion is Village of Waukesha Plan Commission recommends to the Village Board approval of the plan of operation request for John Kesley for the property located at West two thirty-nine, South thirty-eight ninety-nine, Big Ben Road, units twenty-five and twenty-six, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine, subject to the conditions in my staff report.
Is there a motion to that effect from the Plan Commission? I saw move.
Hey, I have one question. If, if you set a, like a twenty-four, leave it at twenty-four hours for this one, are you setting precedence for them all?
No, but we're taking these on an individual basis, so I think we can restrict certain ones to hours and some not. So it's, this is the, just this case alone, because he's using it for personal storage. Somebody else may have a business and we can restrict that.
So are you saying everyone that's used for personal storage is going to go with the twenty-four hours?
No, we're not. We're going to look at them all and see what their personal storage definition is, as Dan asked before, so I think, I think that's the direction I want to go.
So I, I can see him coming back and saying, well, so-and-so is doing this, why can't I do that?
We've always said, they've, each case is individually handled, so, not just these, but the, the general statement, so.
I'll second that one.
It's moved and seconded to, I don't know if we want to repeat the motion or not at this point, but no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Village Board. Do we have a motion from the Village Board to, to accept the?
I move that the Board accept the recommendations of the Plan Commission.
I'll second that motion.
It's moved and seconded to accept the recommendation from the Plan Commission to the Village Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moving on to number eleven, discussion possible action on Storage Shop USA Trojan, I hope I get this right, Trojanowski, unit twenty-one, plan of operation, request for petitioner Scott Trojanowski for the property located at West two thirty-nine, South thirty-eight ninety-nine, Big Ben Road, unit twenty-one, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine, tax key W A K T one three five one nine nine six zero two five, for approval of a plan of operation to purchase and use unit twenty-one for personal storage. Mr. Malarki, again?
I have nothing else to add. Maybe the petitioner can clarify what he plans to use the storage for.
Yeah, is the petitioner here? Come on up. Give your name and address, please.
Scott Trojanowski. Well done, by the way, on the pronunciation. Appreciate that.
Yeah, after you said that now, I guess it sounded very familiar, like I did do it right. Thank you.
W two three nine S thirty-eight ninety-nine, Big Ben Road. I'm in unit twenty-one. Just using it as a larger extension of my garage. I got a couple extra cars and a boat that I need winter storage, plain and simple.
No working on cars at three o'clock in the morning?
I'm no mechanic.
You're not a mechanic?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So, you got cars though?
I do, I do.
Okay. Anybody from the Plan Commission have questions for, for him, or?
Just you're aware there'll be fire inspections, because it is commercial property.
Yeah, I, I, I heard you mention that, and I'm aware of the noise ordinance, and, I mean, I just plan to use it like a garage, so.
Anybody else got questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan of operation for Scott, and along with the conditions that the planner put on it.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve a plan of operation for Scott Trojanowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Village Board. Do we have a motion from the Village Board to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission?
I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number twelve, discussion possible action on Storage Shop USA Mermolia, unit twenty-two, plan of operation, request for petitioner William Mermolia for the property located at West two three nine.
South thirty-eight ninety-nine, Big Ben Road, unit twenty-two, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine, tax key W A K T one three five one nine nine six zero two six, for approval of plan of operation to purchase and use unit twenty-two for personal storage.
The only thing I'd clarify in this one is that the petitioner, as indicated, he also used it for automotive work on his personal vehicles.
William Mermolia, W two three nine S three eight nine nine, Big Ben Road, unit twenty-two. Did you select a garage? I live in a strict subdivision who's yelling at me for keeping cars parked in the driveway overnight, so I didn't want to sell my house in Muskego. It seemed like a good opportunity, so I have one collector car, seventy-one Cutlass, and a motorcycle that I don't want to have. I have it in my garage now, but then I park my car outside, so. Just want to park it in there and just be able to change my oil, work on my car. Nothing more than that, no different than I do in my garage at my house. Just want to park it in there and just be able to change my oil, work on my car. Nothing more than that, no different than I do in my garage at my house. Change my, rotate my tires, I. Well, I sleep same time you guys do, so, no. It would most likely be a weekend. I work a lot of hours Monday through Friday, so I would work at my house and, on my vehicles on the weekend, so, the same thing I would do here. I'm going to no doubt store some junk there that I got in my house that's been out the herd, so to speak, because there's, you know, there's a lot of stuff at my house, but no different than I would at my personal property. So I look at this as a personal property, just it's in a commercial location.
Question for the Plan Commission.
I just have a question for Sean. Did, I can't remember, did we have anything in the write-ups on these regarding the owners re-renting the units?
We did not have anything that prohibited that.
Well, I believe if they did, they would have come in.
Yeah, it's, if it's a new user, it'd be a new plan of operation, correct?
Okay.
So that would, that would. Right. So, do we want to, are we going to discuss limits on the automotive work hours of operation, or is that?
On the Plan Commission, you guys have any preference here, or? Mr. Mermolia, you, you list in your application that you intend to install a lift?
Correct.
What sort of lift?
Just a four-post lift. It lifts up my car, then I can go underneath and change my oil. I can also keep one car up on top, and I can park another car underneath it. I guess I'm asking if, if I'm, you know, purchasing a property, I'd like the same respect that any other neighbor would get that could work on their car. That's how I'm treating it. This is not my business. This is my personal storage unit. Right now, I rent the personal storage unit, and I store a car there. I have my junk there. I can go there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm surprised to hear that we want to try to limit this. I think I should be treated no differently than any other taxpayer that has a property in the area. I mean, why should I be told I can't, but yet somebody across the street, he could go work on this car? I just, I don't see where the fairness of this is coming into this. I'm paying taxes, I'm paying electricity, I'm paying a fee. There's strict rules in the subdivision that I have to, or the, the property that I had to maintain by me purchasing it. They have rules. I'm sure you, you as a board set a lot of those rules, have you not? I mean, there's a twenty-page booklet of what I can and what I can't do, so I don't know if you're aware of what those are. I think maybe if you read those, you, you would be educated. There's, there's not a lot of things I can do. I can't sleep there, I can't throw parties there. There's a lot of rules, so I'll ask the Board, did, did you review that document to see what I can and what I can't do?
Yes, yes, yes.
So then, I don't know what the question really is. I think I should be allowed to access if I want to go pick up a snow blower, because it's going to snow, and it's eleven o'clock. If I want to run and go pick up my snow blower, I don't see why I can't go do that. I, I don't understand, I guess, why I would be treated differently.
You, you're absolutely right. However, a lot of car guys share their lift with their friends, and then you have a whole lot of car guys hanging around and, at all hours. And that doesn't sound like what your intent is, but I know that that occurs. So that, that's what we're concerned with.
But then at the same point, you said you had a noise, you have noise rules, so after ten o'clock, if a neighbor had an issue with that, they would call the authorities. And that problem would be fixed, just like if, if I had an issue as a neighbor, that's what it's, there's rules in place. I just don't know why we're being more strict with the people that are going to use these for personal use. I, I don't understand that. I think we're being singled out here, and I, I don't think it's fair. That's all I'm saying.
This isn't residential use. This is a business, overall a business use. You luckily are being able to get this to use it for your personal use. That's nice.
First, first let me clarify, you're not being singled out. Every business that comes in here makes a proposal as to what they want approved for their hours of operation. And every business, we look at the reasonableness of that request. There's no automatic twenty-four hours for any business, and many of these people are business owners in this community. So I just want to make clear, you're not being treated any different. You make an application, and they review the application. If you make the application for twenty-four hours, we look at it. I can tell you, ten years ago, gas stations weren't given twenty-four hours, and now it's commonplace that they can operate twenty-four hours, or at least let you pump the gas. So, please understand, you're not being treated any different. We'll hear you out, and, and your request will be taken seriously like everybody else's request.
I hundred percent.
Certain businesses that it's not appropriate. I'm sure you would agree.
Absolutely.
Certain businesses, you know, that it wouldn't be appropriate twenty-four hours. Your request, I assume, is twenty-four hours. We've made it clear that that's your request, and they're just discussing the reasonableness of this request. I'm not, you're, you're fine to make all the statements you made. I just have to correct you, you're not being treated any different.
I'm just saying I'm not a business. I'm just using for personal use. So I appreciate what you're saying, though. That's a fair statement.
So, we've already established that personal use, personal storage, the twenty-four seven is no problem. We've just, so you come in to get your snow blower, that's fine. That's, that's personal use. Right, and, and so I haven't gotten to the second part. Yeah, the point I'm making though, for his cars and his snow blower, if he wants to get a snow blower because he needs it, we've already said, twenty-four hour access is, is okay for that. The only thing I ask is whether or not his automotive repair is a consideration for other hours of operation. I'm not saying it should be, I'm saying, let me know, so I can.
I think as long as it's his own, his very own automotive repair, and not somebody else's.
That's perfectly fine by me. I mean, that's the only car I'm working on is my own, so. Right. Well, we already set the rules, you can, so sorry.
Exactly, but, you know, maybe at three in the morning when nobody's looking, right?
You can't do it three in the morning, I'm, I'm, you know.
Okay.
It's all good points you make, it really is.
I mean, that's, that's the whole gist of, we have to worry about the neighbors.
Absolutely.
You know, and we have car, car guys, you know, they like to tinker around, have their car, and they take it out on, for a test drive at two o'clock in the morning, after they just put a new set of headers on it or something like that. You know, and it's.
Well, then most likely they'd call the police, and then the police would probably give somebody a ticket, I'm sure.
Well, not necessarily. After the people are awoken at three o'clock in the morning, they don't care if the police get them or not, you know, they just, they're not happy. So I, I guess that's why we're asking these questions, to make sure that, you know, you understand to be reasonably responsible. And if we can make it twenty-four seven for you, fine, if you need to come and get a snow blower or whatever.
I appreciate that.
But I guess we kind of want to make that point, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
And to clarify, the plan of operation is limited to his personal vehicles, work on his personal vehicles, so it's, it's in there.
Yep, yep. I guess it's appropriate for any more comments from the Plan Commission at this point?
Let's have Sean go through, I think you need to go through each of these motions. We sort of circumvented it, but read your motion into the record, please.
Did you have one, Vicki? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Village of Waukesha Plan Commission recommends to the Village Board approval of the plan of oper, operation request for William Mermolia for the property located at West two thirty-nine, South thirty-eight ninety-nine, Big Ben Road, unit twenty-two, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine, subject to the following conditions, and for this one, its plan of operation approval is limited to William Mermolia on the existing parcel, unit twenty-two. Use of the property by any other entity for any other purpose is not permitted, reflecting the following plan of operation. Uses and activities limited to indoor personal storage, including storage of collector cars and automotive work on personal vehicles, including installation of a vehicle lift, overnight outdoor parking, overnight sleep in the unit, outdoor storage prohibited, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I saw move, thank you, Sean.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by trust, by Commissioner Piala. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, Village Board, do we have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kalinsky, by, I'm sorry, Trustee Kalinsky, and, and Trustee Gurekki seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Number thirteen, discussion possible action on Storage Shop Leonardelli, units twenty-three and twenty-four, plan of operation, request for petitioner Leonardelli, I'm probably killing that one, but two thousand and seven joint revocable trust, John and Linda Leonardelli, trustees for the property located at West two three nine. 2007 Joint Revocable Trust, John and Linda Leonardelli, trustees for the property located at West 239, South 3899 Big Ben Road, Units 23 and 24, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53189. Tax key WAKT 1351996027, and WATK 1351996028, for approval of a plan of operation to purchase and use Units 23 and 24 for personal storage. Mr. Malarky.
Nothing else to add.
I'm John Leonardelli, West 239, South 3899 Big Ben Road, Units 23 and 24. Personal storage, I'm retired, I don't plan on being there at 3:00 in the morning, so that's no issue with me. I've got a collector car, I've got kids that ask me to store things, I've got another building over in New Berlin that's full, and I'm just looking at it as a good investment. And I probably will be there every other day. I'm also a collector, I was in the tool business, I'm a collector of toolboxes, and I restore them, so it's a hobby-type operation. But my day's done at 7:00. If anything, I might be there at 8:00 in the morning, but usually I'm there by myself, it's rare if somebody else is there with me. So it's personal storage.
Right. Plan Commission members, any questions?
Well, there, I've had other, I've had other units, and they're good investments. When I sold the house that I had in New Berlin, I had a 25-by-40 garage attached to my two-car garage. I was in the tool business, at that time I had a Freightliner, I'm retired now. And I had one unit in New Berlin, and when I went to lease, I wanted to lease that one out, everybody wanted to buy it, so I sold it. And then when we sold our house, I bought a double unit over there. And I, I do have a collector car, and I do have a lift, but that's at my other shop, I've got another location, so I, I don't plan on, that's close to my home, it's only a mile and a half from my house. And, but as, as far as storage, I've got kids that ask me to store things, sometimes I store some of our, if we go out of town, we might leave some of our cars in there, that type of thing. And that's about it.
Okay, anybody else? Kathy?
What was that hobby you said you had?
I was a franchisee for a company called Mac Tools for 31 years, and I'm into old toolboxes, Snap-on Mac, personal ones.
Okay.
I collect them and restore them, and sometimes resell them.
Okay, and that's during the day most of the time that you're in there?
Yeah, and there's not a lot that you do on a toolbox, other than clean it, make sure it works right, et cetera, you know, it's, it's a hobby. And it's, my body clock ends at, you know, I got to be home at 7:00. Yeah, oh yeah, right, so...
Yeah, we'll try to hurry this along for you, if you...
And again, the vehicles in there are all yours, they're personal.
Anybody else? Mr. Malarky, do you have any motion?
Yes, Plan Commission recommends to the Village Board approval of a plan of operation request for John Leonardelli for the property located at West 239, South 3899 West, I'm sorry, Big Ben Road, Units 23 and 24. Subject to the following conditions, limited to John Leonardelli, Units 23 and 24. Uses and activities limited to indoor personal storage, including storage of personal vehicles, overnight outdoor parking, overnight sleeping, and outdoor storage are prohibited. Hours of operation will be 24 hours a day.
Do we have a motion from the Plan Commission?
I saw move, thank you, Sean, again.
You're welcome.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Village Board, do we have a recommendation from you?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, or accept the recommendation from the Plan Commission. Village Board members, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right, thank you very much, okay.
You're welcome. Number 15, nope, I'm sorry, number 14. Discussion and possible action on an accessory building request for petitioner Jose Alpizar for the property located at South 42 West 2210 Beeheim Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53189. Tax key WAKT 1389989001, to obtain a conditional use permit for approval of a 60 by 160-foot, 9,600 square foot accessory building to be used for storage of hay and farm equipment. Mr. Malarky.
Thank you, you can see the properties in the overhead above, it's on Beeheim Road, just east of Rolling Oaks subdivision. The property itself is 7.56 acres. The petitioner also owns the properties, the three-acre property to the south, and then the 2.6-acre property to the south as well, that access Beeheim Road. But the accessory building is proposed for the parcel that's highlighted up there in the northwest corner. It'll measure about 24 feet from grade to peak. The materials will be gray vertical steel siding, dark gray steel roof, with a darker gray wainscoring on the base to match the roof. The applicant has included some pictures of the residence on the property, and also color image of the proposed building. The, here's a, a plan of the, the property. The petitioner's looking to locate the building in a north-south orientation in the northwest corner. It's going to be set 45 feet back from the west property line and the north property line. He's also submitted a plan that shows an alternative orientation, where it's more of an east-west orientation in the same corner, same setbacks. The north-south orientation would, would be, in my opinion, tucked away a little bit better in the, in the corner. Anything over 1,200 square feet, accessory building-wise, gets reviewed by the Plan Commission and the Board. He's also, also requesting a waiver from the requirements of Section 42-36E3, which is the accessory building section and the size limits, because this building is larger than is normally allowed on a, on a partial of this size. The accessory building meets all the zoning setback requirements, building separation requirements, et cetera. The only thing in question here is the size. And so normally, for a property of 7.56 acres, the maximum square footage is 4,939 square feet, 1.5% of the lot area. And his building is almost twice as large as would normally be allowed for a property this size. There's also an existing small shed, 100-square-foot shed on the property, so in total, the property would have 9,700 square feet of accessory building. Again, where only 4,900 is, is typically allowed. Also, in addition, in respect, with respect to appearance and compatibility, here's the building itself. You can see it's a metal building, metal siding, metal roof, and then you see the, the wainscoring on the bottom. Our ordinance normally requires that the accessory building be compatible with the, the principal residence. That determination's made by the Plan Commission and the Board. Compatibility may include building materials, colors, roof pitch, windows, building massing and scale, et cetera. I, I would mention that the petitioner has offered to use a horizontal LP smart side or similar material on the south elevation of the building, the one that would be facing the road. The building itself is about 750 feet back from the roadway, and there is some substantial, if you go, go back to the property overview. All the, the property from all sides is, is highly vegetated, the west side, north side, east side. And then even from the road, you can see there's a, you know, a bunch of vegetation here at the roadway. So, it is fairly well-screened, so that, that's a consideration. I've listed the, on page 3, number 8, the request for modification. That lists the factors that the Plan Commission has to determine, or has to at least consider when making a determination for a waiver. But in the end, a request for a waiver modification may be granted without making an affirmative finding concerning those factors, as long as they find it's objective, objectively reasonable to, to do so. I mentioned before, the height's 24 feet, 24 feet 1 inches. Normally, height's limited to 18 feet for accessory buildings, but we do allow increases up to 10 feet beyond the 18 feet, provided that the setbacks and offsets are increased by 2 feet for every 1 foot in height. So, the building is setback 45 feet from the property lines, he meets those requirements to increase the height. The only comment that I'd make is that if you went another 5 feet in from the north property line and west property line, you'd have 50 feet, which would allow the building to be used for animal units at some point in the future, if you'd sell the property. So you can't have animals in here unless it's 50 feet out the property line, so something to consider, so that's all I have, thanks.
Do you understand that if he moved it in, you'd have to be able to keep animals, it might be to your advantage to do that?
Yeah, we, we have room to go another 5 feet, so...
So that would make sense to you to do that, correct?
Yeah.
So just so the record's clear, you're modifying your request that relocate it just 5, 5 feet more from the lot lines?
Yep.
I mean, we just got to know what we're approving, so the building's picture knows, if, if it's approved, what we're approving.
Yeah, whatever is easy, we just wanted to storage our hay, this is my partner Terry Team, he's doing hay for over 90 years. And, yeah, and we doing hay with him together, and we just need a shed, because when we do hay, the rain, we don't have a place to go with the hay, so our, all hay got wet, and, you know, we use it for our customers, for horse...
Can you get a lot of machinery out of site too, because you can, can find in the shed that it's not standing there?
And that way, we're going to have a place to storage our hay equipment.
Okay, you, you do realize that if this is approved, this is all you can use it for, in the future you can't rent it out for car storage, or boat storage, or anything like that? This is the only use you're going to be approved for, if they do do that, okay? As long as you understand that, I'm trying to be forward with all this as I can be, but... So, Plan Commission members, do you have any comments, questions?
Are you storing any hay or equipment somewhere else now, or...
We used to ask people favors to use the sheds.
And rent, but then...
And rent, but now then, they using their own sheds, so they, we don't have a place to go, and there's the reason we want to build our own, because nobody wants to help us. Yes. Right on Beeheim Road, but this is the main farmer, and I've become his partner, so I'm learning from him. Yeah, horses, like quality hay for beautiful horses. Yeah, I mean, we can do another 5 feet, we have plenty of room.
I just brought that up, because Sean brought it up, and it makes sense, if I was doing it, that's what I would do, just to keep my options open in the future.
Yeah, we can do it, we can go 5, 5 more feet.
Right.
And that way, we're not that close to the neighbors too, so...
Anybody else?
Yeah, that, I would ask to, to give your opinion on that.
I looked at it, and I, I prefer the first one in my book, because it probably less exposure to the road, if you wanted, if that's an issue for anybody.
The north-south orientation?
But the other side's a lot leveler, there's less filling.
Well, that's your number one preference, though, according to the plan you submitted, so I guess that's why I'm going with that.
Well, we didn't realize we could go there, though, until they measured it out. We didn't know what the rules were, see?
But whatever, whatever is easy for, we just want a building to storage our stuff.
But it would make it a lot easier, because there's a, well, you know, it...
Yeah, because if you do it, we do it that way, it's going to be hiding from the road too, you're not, you're not really going to see it from the road.
Well, and the neighbors all along there, did you talk to any of the neighbors, because they're going to be looking at the barn, the back of the barn?
Oh yeah, he talked to them, and there's all that brush pens, there's like...
But were they okay with it?
Yeah, they okay, and they love horses, some of their people, they have horses on some, uh, different places too, and there's some of them that buy hay from us.
There is quite a bit of tree line through there, shields it all pretty well from the, from the subdivision behind that, that's, that's true. I know where this is, and it's, it's very much shielded, so I mean, if that's an issue, you really can't hide a 60 by 160-foot building. It's there.
Yep.
We're talking about a, a residential zoning here, this isn't egg zoning, it's RE, it's residential estate. I know we can grant waivers, and I'm in favor of a waiver if it's a little bit, because, yeah, well, I can't quite get my truck in there, because it ain't long enough, and I need an extra foot or something, that's one thing. But this building is twice what's allowed.
So, Sean?
But it is a farm and zoned on, on the front part, we got agricultural...
Yeah, where the... Yeah, the other two properties is farm zoning.
If you can look it up, I can tell you.
It's not one property, though, this piece of property is owned RE, and we can only look at this one piece of property. If you want to do a certified survey and, and connect all the properties, so you have a 20-acre parcel and, and egg zoning, that's a whole different story then.
But see, we didn't have enough acreage until we bought this extra thing, so we could put a shed up.
Sean, if I may, without the waiver, how large of a building would be allowed?
Well, total with, including the other building as well, it's 4,930...
But we have almost 8 acres, so the, the size you have on file is not...
Right, but you can't, you can't consider those other acres without being connected to the property. There, and so the prop, just to clarify the zoning, it's, this is all, that, all this color is residential estate, none of it's, none of it's egg-zoned. It's all residential estate, which does allow egg practices, however, it's not egg-zoned.
But it's egg-zoned, because we get it by our taxing, it's right under.
That's different, so it's, it's assessed as agricultural use, because that's how the property is used, but the zoning is... It's not, it's not the same thing.
And we do the hay on the whole other area, so...
So, so the point is, is that if you would, this parcel here, for instance, let me turn this off, so you can see it a little bit better. This property here, that's, that's yours, if you connected it together, you could use the acreage for both of them in combination to get a, a larger building. It still wouldn't get you the 9,600 square feet that you're asking for with a waiver, but it would get you more than the 49.
How many acres is that front piece?
That's almost, it's almost 3 acres, so...
So they still won't get an egg zoning?
They still wouldn't reach that number, no.
They won't get an egg zoning neither.
No.
It's 20 acres, correct?
That's right, yeah, oh yeah, yep. That's what it says, 2.9.
Well, that was supposed to be a mother-in-law lot, that's maybe for the 3, extra houses more.
That's the orchard, that.
Well, there's another, there's another property to the east, which is 2.6 acres, that has a house on it already. So that can't be combined with the property we're talking about, because there's a house there already.
There's a shed on that property, you said, that you're including as part of the total?
It's 100 square feet, yeah.
It's just 100 square feet, or is, what is that being used for?
They used to use it just to storage the lawnmower, just a little shed, it's not that big.
Is it used anymore?
Not really.
So you could tear it down?
I can take that one down, aside, I just, no, on the, the little shed where...
It's this little thing.
Yeah, the little one where, where we storage the, the lawnmower.
So combining all the properties into one would not get us to where they want to be?
Well, you, you can't combine them all in the one, because again, that one has a house on it, but even the two, combining the two properties gets you 7.55 plus 2.9. I can tell you what that would, would that be equal. That's 6,800 square feet, it gets you closer.
Yeah.
They're asking for 96, though.
Yeah, that would be, I almost think that would be doable, if you'd combine them, then you can get some, some kind of shed anyway with... I mean, you're talking, that's a very large shed you're asking for here, for a smaller residential area.
What is the biggest we can go?
The biggest you can go without combination is, if you, if you tear that existing little building down, you can do 4,939 square feet, so... So that's 60 by 77, or, you know, thereabouts.
Roughly 60 by 80.
Yeah, roughly.
It's going to be only enough room for like 3 hayways.
Well, you get more than 3 in there.
3. But they'll cost almost the same price.
Pardon me?
They're almost, the cost, the cost is almost the same price with the builder.
Because the bigger shed, you know you get it.
Well, square footage goes down, cost does, but the shed goes up.
Well, we went to before, all the neighbors are not a problem, get them to sign something, would that help? No.
You still got a zoning issue here that you're not going to get around. I don't, I think you'd have to recalculate this and figure out if you want to do it that way at this point. I don't know, if the, the Plan Commission's got any other comments here, what, which direction you want to go, or...
At this point, Mr. President, oftentimes it's helpful to go around the room and see where the people, where people are at and what their thinking is to give them guidance, and then he can decide whether he wants to withdraw, table it for you to think about it, but it's best for him to get your impression.
Okay. Kath, Vicki rather, do you have any comments as to what you think should happen here?
No, I think it's an awfully big property to put in a residential area, so I'd prefer it either wasn't that large or it goes up on the, on that they want it on where there's not as many.
Yeah, whatever's, wherever you guys said put it on, we put it.
Let's go around the room first, okay? Kathy?
I, I think it's a pretty big, uh, building for that size property, and that you might want to consider, you know, adding on some of that, you know, resur surveying it, or downsizing that property and, uh, downsizing that building, and then re-looking at the design of that to get maximum use inside on a smaller building.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, I can't support a waiver of twice the size and not, not an RE zoning. I can't support that. Likewise, if they wanted to combine the buildings and get a little bit bigger building, or if they want to combine the lots, so they can get a little bit bigger building, I think that would be a smart thing to consider.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah, I'm on the same boat as Dan. We have followed some of our ordinance here, and this is pretty big for an eight, sir, seven, eight acre lot.
Okay.
The only thing is we have to know a decision, because otherwise the price is gonna go way up if we don't. And see, we're supposed to know it and identify the thing, because we paid down on it already. Otherwise, it's gonna go up fifteen percent next week, so we gotta sort of...
We paid the down payment already, because if not, they're gonna...
Talk to your salesman and tell him you want to downsize it and use the down payment towards the, the smaller sized building?
Yeah, but I know if it's not gonna be that good, I'm not building it. I don't hardly pay to put it up, so.
You guys be able to do a, if we can do a hundred by sixty, go sixty feet down size?
If you combine the parcels, you wouldn't need a waiver for that building that size. You would not. If you combine this parcel and this parcel, these two.
So we combine those two, what is the max we can do?
You could get sixty-eight hundred square feet.
So which is sixty?
That's sixty by one-ten about.
Sixty by one-ten?
About, yeah.
That's a pretty good sized building itself.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys okay with that, we can do that and combine that.
You gotta come back with a certified survey map.
You got a good server, yeah, a certified survey map, and we can connect those, join those parcels to make that work.
Yeah, we not do.
And just so, I know you've said it, Sean, but just so we know, how big could they build on, um, if they tear the little one down?
Forty, forty-nine hundred thirty-nine square feet, which is about, I think we said sixty by sev, by eighty, almost eighty, yeah.
Sixty by eighty roughly, I think.
Sixty by eighty should be fine, no?
Yeah, sixty by eighty would be forty-eight hundred, so that would be, you said forty-nine?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Right, yeah. So sixty by eighty would be...
Would get you no waiver. You could, you could do it.
Yeah, you wouldn't need a waiver or anything. You can come in and be approved, correct? Yeah.
So we have to do another meeting, or?
You'd have to come in with that one, yes. You gotta get the properties combined first.
Well, we would need combination for that one.
You would not need a combination?
The sixty by eighty can, can work on the lot.
On this, okay.
Right.
I didn't understand that. I thought you meant...
Yeah, no, the sixty by eighty is, gives you forty-eight hundred. Their max is forty-nine thirty-nine. They could even keep their small building, their hundred square foot building, because that would total forty-nine hundred. So, they'd be good. They wouldn't have to combine anything. So the question is, you know, if they want...
Go ahead, Sean.
Could they, could they, they have an application, and they showed you what the building's gonna look like. If it's just gonna be shorter, would that be okay, or would they need to come back?
That's what I was just gonna ask you, is if we, you guys agreeable to a sixty by eighty?
By eighty, yeah, we'd be okay with it.
Go ahead with that tonight and approve that?
We haven't talked about the architecture yet, though. That's something else we have to talk about.
I thought you said it would be the same as the other one.
Well, no. I, it would be the same, but it's a metal, it's a metal building, and so we don't often approve metal siding as part of residential parcels. However, we have, we have approved metal buildings when it's been for an egg use in a residential district, and so that, that difference has been made before.
That's true. I do remember that.
Unless you'd like to come over to see the site yourself, and you see it's not gonna be a ice arc, because it's all...
Would the height, would the height be a problem with a sixty by eighty? Would that change?
The height is, the height is, I mean, if, I don't think it would get smaller, right? The height would be the same.
The height should be the same to feed the hayway ends.
If you want to clear that there's some clearance, you know, if the loads are heaped up, that we can get in there, you know?
Yeah, but we'd be okay with sixty by eighty.
So the idea would be sixty by eighty in a, in an, in a east-west or a horri, orientation, at least fifty feet from the property lines.
You know, I don't have a problem with the east-west either, one way or another. I just thought on the plan here, that was their preference, and I, because I didn't have a problem with it.
Right.
That's what they want, is...
Whatever you guys approve, we okay?
At the time, we didn't think that would work that way, and then they measured it out, and it would, so I said, let's go that way, you know?
What are the options besides a steel or, what, what did you say? Exterior, what are the options?
Yeah, didn't you list a different option or something?
They, they mentioned potential LP smart siding or something similar, some horizontal siding on the south elevation they proposed.
Just towards the, towards the road, but you're not gonna really see the...
Either way, you're not gonna see it.
You're not gonna see it anyway, huh? Okay, uh, you guys are agreeable to a sixty by eighty?
Yes.
We can...
Fifty feet off the property lines.
Right, and... Any other discussion from the Plan Commission on that option?
Can we get some smart siding on there so it's a little more attractive? I mean, those trees aren't gonna be there forever.
This is in the front. This is to the south, so there's really no...
Yeah, you're not gonna really see the building. You're not, you're not even see the house from the road.
You, you really can't see the house from the road. I know where this...
They're really tall. You're not even see the houses on summer. You don't even see the houses.
They're probably forty feet at least.
No.
No, because they're gonna be gone pretty quick.
No, those trees, I don't think we can do anything with the trees either. And I don't want to take the trees away either, so.
Any other comments from the Plan Commission?
I think they should redo this and come back. We're just redesigning the whole building and trying to figure everything out by... We have nothing to go off of now. There's no plan of where it's gonna be exactly. The, now they're down to sixty by eighty.
If you come to my property, you don't really see my house from the road. Even now, we don't, we know trees.
Nothing to do with seeing it, but I mean, we have our ordinances, and this is all supposed to come to us done.
Yeah, but if this was no trees and it was a boat, no, that's a different story, you know?
So, you, what's the plan? I mean, do you want to just table this thing until, come back with another plan?
I think it should be tabled.
Well, at this point, we make the motion, see if we could second it and see what happens.
Sean, can you work with them and...
Yeah, right now, the direct, the direction I've heard so far is fifty feet off the property lines, a sixty by eighty building. And so far, the, the siding as proposed is, is okay, um, with the wainscoting on the bottom and the dark steel roof. Um, that's, that's what I've heard so far.
Kind of what I'm hearing too, and I'm, and I'm...
Wait, I want to add one more.
Go ahead, John.
The location is up to them, north-south or east-west. I didn't hear anybody...
Well, they, no. I don't think it matters. That part is...
I didn't hear anybody saying it mattered, so.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, but we need to nail it down. Where's it gonna go?
That's fine. He's just saying where we think.
Yeah, we can just put it right there.
Work with them. He wanted to make sure that he was getting...
Yeah, that was the direction, yeah.
To work with them.
Because the other way, there's a quite a great thing there, you know?
Well, if you want the second site, I don't think anybody's objecting to that, but...
And it's hiding from the road because the road is all the way on, on this side.
See, for me right now, if that's where it's gonna be, and you got a sixty by eighty building, I, I can go along with this. I mean, I don't know if we want to bring you back to do this all over again, but you guys, that's up to the Plan Commission here at this point, what you feel, but I...
We're doing the same building, only on a smaller size, but we're gonna have to go through this, bring them back again. I guess that's up to the Plan Commission.
One more question on your recommendations. Point six states that the accessory building shall be compatible with the principal residence and residential district. Is a steel building, does that meet that qualification? I guess I'm just, I'm confused on that.
Right, so the, the ordinance requires that accessory buildings be found compatible, right? And I listed some of the things that could be considered as part of compatibility. Materials and colors.
Yeah, color. We can paint the...
And, and, you know, roof pitch, windows, massing, all those things are functions. It doesn't have to be the exact materials or exact color, but you need to determine that it's compatible.
So the steel siding would meet that recommendation in point six?
That, that is up to you to decide.
Well, didn't we?
Okay, because I, frankly, I'll just weigh in here. I prefer the, the smart siding like, like Vicki mentioned.
Didn't we already do this once? I mean, if it's an egg use, didn't we pay a waiver then?
We have approved metal siding for an egg building. Now that...
On residential?
That particular building had a little more to it in terms of design. Uh, it was red. It had cupolas and some, some massing, and it looked like a traditional barn structure just happened, you know, it happened to be...
On Milky Way Road.
Milky Way, right, right. So there was more to it, um...
So, okay, moving along here, do we have any preference from now? Which way do you guys want to go? What motion do you want to make? I gave you my viewpoint. You guys seem to be wanting to bring them back. Um, what do you want to do?
Would they consider smart siding? Or at least half of the building? Do you know what that is?
Smart siding is, yeah. I mean, if you want to, we can put smart siding facing the road, but you're not gonna really see that, but if that's what you want.
It's a, they've offered to do it, so I mean, it's a condition that you can put on.
I think that would look better.
But if you can't see it anywhere, isn't...
Yeah, but then...
We have zoning ordinance.
Yes, we got it.
I know, I know.
That moves in there next time, might not want what you have. It's pretty stark looking, you know, for a resident.
Okay, anybody else? Is there a, a motion to the effect to approve this smaller sized building? I will make that motion if there's a second.
I'll second that motion based on, on Sean's recommendation, the smart siding, the smaller sized building. Is that what your first was?
That's what I was, we brought up, the smart siding, so I guess, I guess...
And the location, one of those two locations.
Yeah.
To clarify, smart siding in the south elevation?
Yeah.
So this towards the road, right?
Does it have to be smart sided? It can be any horizontal lap siding.
Or like a regular siding?
Okay, now we're getting to another area again here. What are we talking about now? Lap siding?
Horizontal laps, any, you know, whether it's vinyl or LP siding, just some kind of horizontal lap siding.
Yep. Think that would be more compatible to the house, but that's fine. There's a motion. Sean, are you clear as to the motion?
So far, I have it as the sixty by eighty building, horizontal lap siding on the south side, relocation for fifty foot offsets, and then whether it's the north-south or east-west orientation is okay. In addition to the rest of my conditions.
That's what I had in mind, so, yeah. Can you, Kathy, are you okay with that? All right.
Read the rest of your conditions and then...
Um, well, we can take the waiver one out because there's no waiver required anymore. Um, that it's constructed in accordance with the plans presented tonight. Um, I talked about the size, the sixty by eighty.
You can sit down, Terry.
Height of twenty-four feet, comply with the height requirements of forty-two thirty-seven, comply with the requirements of residential estate, single-family district, um, compatible with the principal residence.
Twenty, twenty feet.
Recorded deed restriction of the property in form approved by the village attorney, giving notice that the use of the building is for residential and egg purposes only. Um, building inspector has the right to recertify the location with respect to setbacks and offsets. Need a preliminary site evaluation from Waukesha County for sanitary sewage system, obtain appropriate permits and reimbursement of fees.
You mentioned residential and egg use.
Right.
So he can use it for...
To store his personal equipment. If he, you know, if, if he's got a boat or something, if it's personal, he can put it in there.
Do you have a motion on the floor, Plan Commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we need to nail down the location. Is it gonna be east and west or north and south?
East and west, yeah.
Okay, let's make that part of the motion instead of either or. And I think we need it spelled out on, on the drawing as well. So drawing needs to come back in, and not to us, but I think staff has to, has the appropriate drawing of where it's located on the property and, and once it's set out.
Sure.
Well, this would be the east-west, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Right, but, but, so the drawing that's up there now is for a different building. So we want an updated drawing that shows the sixty by eighty, fifty foot setbacks, exactly where it's gonna be on the site, and so we have it just for the record.
Are you good with that, Sean, to do that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. It doesn't, it's not coming back to the Plan Commission. I'll, I'll take a look at it.
I don't think it needs to come back here. I'd happy with staff.
If I may, if I may, before a motion is made, would you have any opposition?
Motion has been made. We're in discussion at the, for the motion, so go ahead.
Would you have any opposition, instead of a fifty foot setback from the existing subdivision, fifty foot off the other lot line?
It's gonna be closer to my house, but we're gonna lose a lot of hay, uh, ground. We're gonna make less hay now, because we also do hay. We do hay on my property too.
What's the current setback from the fence?
Fifty.
It's already fifty feet?
Right now, we do forty-five, but we're gonna do fifty now.
Yeah, see, they're, they're fifty feet back from, from it already.
So it's really...
So you're saying you couldn't move it to the east and put it here?
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's asking.
So then you'd have a bigger setback from the subdivision over here.
Yeah, we can... Yeah, we can go towards the house if, if that's what you guys want. That's fine. But the shed, the little shed is right there.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be at least ten feet away from that shed and at least fifty feet from this property line.
But we, we ought to make it real good if it's short.
Yeah, we can go that way. Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, you can, okay. Do, do you want to include that? It's not my, I know, that's right. It's true. I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. You're right. I would include that in the motion if it's agreeable to Kathy.
I second it, sure.
All right.
We need specificity as far as, you just asked if you could move it. You said yes.
Fifty feet.
No, the original proposal is fifty and fifty. You wanted to move in another fifty?
We want it to be located fifty feet from this eastern property line, so it's maximum distance from the west.
So it's gonna go towards the woods now, by the driveway. Or we can do seventy-five and so twenty...
As Sean said it, it's, it's clear. That's the maker of the motion, the second, that has to be fifty feet from the other lot line, giving the maximum distance from the subdivision.
Right, the only caveat is that there's an existing shed here, so it also has to be ten feet from that.
So it's gotta be sixty feet.
So it might, it might vary. It might be a little more than fifty feet.
It's fine with me, too, I guess. We, that's not gonna matter one way or another as far as that direction. So that's, is that, anybody else have any comments at this point, discussion? Okay, motions on the floor. Is there all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carries. Village, Village now, Ward, do you, do you have a motion to accept the recommendation from the Plan Commission?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carries. Okay, discussion and possible action on Blue Heron Girl Scout Camp site plan, plan of operation. Amendment request for petition on Michelle Getch for the property located at South sixty-two, West two forty-five twenty-eight, Town Line Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five-three-one-eight-nine, Taxkey, W A K T, one-four-three-one-nine-nine-nine, for approval of a site plan of operation, amendment to install an outdoor fitness course with a turf surface on the Girl Scout property. Mr. Malarky?
Uh, thanks. This is pretty simple. It's a seventy-eight acre property. You can see it on the overhead here, um, just off of Town Line Road. They were in front of us a couple of years ago to install a archery, um, shooting range and a storage building, so they got their plan of operation amended then. They're looking for an amendment now to install this outdoor fitness course. Um, the course itself is about thirty-eight feet by seventy-three feet, uh, with artificial surfacing. They're gonna have to do some prep work, site grading, concrete edging. Um, their plan of operation is basically stays the same overall for the Girl Scout camp. This is all they're doing is, is adding this proposed fitness course in. Um, this is the location of it. It's basically just north of this. This is the location of it, it's basically just north of this drive path here. The only, I guess the only real comment I have on this is that they've talked to Waukesha County about stormwater and erosion control, because once you exceed three thousand square feet of disturbance, then the county permits come into play. It doesn't look like they're gonna disturb more than three thousand square feet, but it might be close. So we're asking them to submit a grading plan as part of the building permit approval process, and if it looks like, if it's gonna be over three thousand square feet of disturbance, then it's gonna have to go to Waukesha County. So that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, petitioner, you have any comments to make?
Yeah, Kevin Cops, property manager with the Girl Scouts. I have been in contact with Marissa at Waukesha County, because we are gonna be close to that three thousand square foot threshold. We're gonna be about forty by seventy-five, finished with concrete, with the concrete curb. So she has sent me everything, and we will be applying for an erosion control permit. So we're, we're gonna be on the safe side of that with the grading and concrete.
Plan commission members, anybody questions?
I have one question, just for the record. Sean, when we did this a couple of years ago, was it very clear in your research that the entire plan of operations, site plan, and everything current and up to date, you know, when we amended, 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 sometimes somebody goes back, looks and says, you know, where are we at on this?
Yeah, no, to be, to be honest, I didn't do a deep dive on it. What I have here is basically, number of employees is five, no company vehicles, hours of operation Monday through Friday, eight AM to eight PM.
Oh, so this is a summary of the entire-
Yes, that's a summary, yes.
Okay, and have you seen that? Is that-
That was in the application.
Correct, yep, I added, I added that in.
It's just an amendment?
No, those, those are up to date.
Just for this course?
No, no, the amendment was just for the plan of operation, being a commercial property, anytime we're doing, doing anything on our property, we submit a site plan of operation for the amendment.
Right, but those hours of operation, those employees are for the full camp, correct?
Yeah, it's people that are out at camp, it's not our entire council, but it is the people that are on site.
Yes, camp.
Yes.
So even when you've got the full camp going in the summer, the maximum employees is five?
Well, actually, the maximum employees in the summer is two, because we're a volunteer-led camp. So everybody out there on site are volunteers. There's myself, the property manager, and a paid medical-
You understand my concern, I just want to make sure, that's great, if this is the entire site plan, plan of operation, we're not really amending it, we're replacing it with this new one.
Well-
Yeah, I mean, we're amending it, but it is all encompass-
We're, I'm restating what those are, yes.
Thank you for that, Sean.
Okay, anybody in the plan commission questions? Concerns? Nothing? Dan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the site plan and plan of operation for the Girl Scout camp.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vicki?
Subject to the, subject to the conditions.
Do you need to read the conditions?
I, I can paraphrase, basically, it's based on the plan of operation we previously discussed, complying at all times with the plans presented, satisfy concerns of the plan commission board, engineer, planner, submit a grading plan in conjunction with the building permit prior to issuance of permits, and then the rest are just standard, our standard site plan, plan of operation conditions.
And we are to submit a commercial building permit, correct, for the, for the project? Even though it's-
That, that I don't know, you could, you should talk to the building inspector.
He told me we didn't have to, and I talked to him before I contacted you, and then I saw this in here, so I wanted to make sure. Because we're not actually putting up a structure, we're just grading.
No, right.
Putting a playground, basically.
If he, if he doesn't, so you're saying he may not require a building permit at all for it?
He told me no, but he said, he said to talk to you about, obviously, getting the site plan of operation amended. So he said that he didn't need anything done on his end, but-
Then, then I guess I don't know, if he's saying a building permit's not required, and you're saying you're working with Waukesha County on stormwater erosion control?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply for erosion control permit.
If, if they're gonna be reviewing that?
No.
So we could simply strike condition four with the grading plan in conjunction with building permits, and then we wouldn't have that issue.
Okay. Does that satisfy everybody in the plan commission with the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries? Village Board?
Thank you.
Do we have a recommendation to accept?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the plan commission.
It's moved by, moved by trustee Grecky and seconded by trustee Kalinsky. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carries? Okay, number sixteen. Discussion and possible action on Custom Tattoo LLC. Use determination request for petitioner Greg Foster, doing business as Custom Tattoo LLC, for determination on whether a tattoo parlor is similar to any of the uses within the business districts, specifically a barber shop or salon, that would be permitted in a B-two or B-three zoning district. Mr. Malarky, again.
Yeah, so that's essentially it. There's a petitioner that's looking to relocate to the village of Waukesha, wants to know where they can put a tattoo parlor, and we don't have it specifically listed in our code. We have three business districts, B-one, B-two, and B-three. In B-two, we do list barber shop, for instance, and we've already made the determination that a salon is similar to a barber shop. They're asking for your determination as to whether or not a tattoo parlor would be a similar use. And the reason they're, they're asking that is because our code has a provision in each zoning district at the end of the list of uses that says, "or any similar use subject to the approval of the village plan commission." If, if you determine it's not similar, a tattoo parlor's not similar to one of those uses, then they'd have to either amend the code, add it as a permitted use in one of the zoning districts, or add it as a conditional use in one of the zoning districts, if you, if you think it would be a conditional use. Some communities handle this differently. Some ordinances specifically list tattoo parlors in a zoning district, where there is, as specific as ours is, we have a very specific zoning ordinance that lists, you know, things like barber shops and jewelry stores and, and things like that. Other ordinances are much more general and, and just list retail uses or personal service uses, that kind of a thing, where it might fit on, under like a personal service. So in the, in the staff report, I have listed all the uses in B-one, B-two, and B-three. Anything in B-one is allowed in B-two, anything in B-two is allowed in B-three. And so that's, I guess that's where I'll leave it. We can discuss it, and if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Just, I'd like to know your thoughts as to how you, how you view this.
Is, is Gloucester here?
I don't know if they're here or not tonight. I, I'd said it wasn't strictly necessary for them to be here, since we're talking about this in a general sense in the code.
I thought if they were here, they would maybe weigh in on some of their stuff.
Yeah, true, exactly.
Plan commission, village board, do you have any discussion on this? Go ahead.
I have two comments. Lived in downtown Waukesha, as I mentioned, we had five, six, and they were all B-two, in the B-two, some maybe B-three, all, all of them were tattoo parlors. Second comment is, we owned one of those buildings, we had two different tattoo parlors in there. They are strictly ruled by the health department, and they were the best tenants, and they only usually had one person in there per tattoo artist at a time. So it was never busy, it was never noisy, it was very clean. I would definitely say we should put that in, you know, they're better than some of the taverns and the bars, so, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point. I guess I'd make the point that I, I think they're similar to, to a barber shop or salon. It's a personal service, you go in, and I think the traffic generated from tattoo parlors is, is less than barber shops and salons, because the turnover is less. I mean, you're in there for an hour, two hours, three hours, or more at a time, and there's, there's a limited number of stylists, or not stylists, but tattoo artists in there at any time, so. Right. I, I don't have any, I don't have any, but my wife has a few, so, you know.
Yeah, right away, that's about to your wife?
Exactly, so.
She's not here, is she?
No, she's not here tonight. All right, she watches them all on YouTube, yeah.
I, I kinda agree with this, I think there's a bit of stigma about this, I think that's long gone. They're not like they used to be, so I wouldn't have a problem with it either, so, anybody else want to weigh in?
I think including it as part of the barber shops and salons, part of making it a whole, that it's similar to that.
Any else?
I think that's what belongs to them too, and, you know, whether you consider it's similar to barber shop or salon, maybe you ought to choose a different thing.
I agree.
And, and we will specify tattoos and salons, and, I mean, I might include nails to all kinds of different things.
Yeah. Whoa, no, yeah. I, I agree, and I've suggested we clean up the, the, some of the uses in the, in the zoning districts to, to make them more comprehensive or inclusive, because it is, it is a bit of a mess right now.
Is this a fine, you want the plan commission only or what?
Plan commission only.
That's what I thought. Do we need a motion to? Yes, sir. Do we need a motion to make a determination that tattoo parlors are similar uses to those uses allowed in which-
B-two, the B-two district.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I say move.
I second.
Move and second it?
Make a determination that tattoo parlors are a similar use and would be allowed in the B-two, correct, Sean?
Correct.
I turned my mic on this time for the, for the-
Do we need to clean up the ordinance right away, or is that a whole different process?
That's a different process, it starts with a petition and has to have an amendment and everything provided. So that's a different process to amend the code and clean, quote, clean up the code. But like, once this determination is made, anybody who comes in for a tattoo parlor in the B-two zoning, the determination stands, just like salons, it's been determined, are allowed in certain districts, and that, that stands.
Right, and who can initiate that, that change to the ordinance? Can that be initiated by the staff, or?
I could check the code, most of our codes are not staffed, they're plan commission, resident, or village board. But we could, you could just direct the clerk to place it on the next agenda, and then we place it on the next agenda for initiation of the process. That we can do tonight, you can just, as a courtesy, say, please place that on the next agenda, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can you do that?
Could you repeat that?
What he said.
I knew that, okay. Take notes there, Mr. Macy. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by the plan commission. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Passes? Action by the village board, is there a motion to accept?
No action, no.
No action? Because, okay, it says so on here, so, I'm going by my notes here. Number seventeen, possible, discussion and possible action on Express Elevator Site Plan, Plan of Operation, Request for petitioner Han Spielman, doing business as Express Elevator LLC for the property located at South Seventeen, West Two-Two-Six-Five-Five, Lincoln Avenue, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five-three-one-eight-six, Tax Key W A K T, one-two-nine-eight-nine-eight-six-zero-zero-five, For the purpose of requesting approval of a site plan, plan of operation, to operate an elevator service, repair, and modernization business in a portion about twenty-five-hundred square feet of an existing building, about ten-thousand square feet. Mr. Malarky?
All right, thanks. That, that's basically the gist of it. The, all, all world transmission is in the building now, they've been there for, for some time. The petitioner is gonna basically take the northeast corner of the building, twenty-five-hundred square feet, the northeast corner. Their business is operation of an elevator service, repair, and modernization operation, including office space and storage of parts and materials. They'll have maximum of seven employees, including four office staff and three field employees that operate primarily on job sites, they'll have one box truck to move large parts and materials that will be stored in the back of the property, they'll operate on site between seven AM and five PM. Parking is required at a rate of one space for every two employees during any twelve-hour period, and then one space per three hundred square feet of office. This essentially equates to seven spaces. There's eleven spaces out in front of the building, they'd use seven of those for their employees. The rest would be for pulling customers for all-world transmission. All-world transmission has six employees, they park in the back of the site, and, and you can see that there's vehicles there now. I would mention that there's been a slight change to the site plan that varies from the aerial photograph here. There's a fence, here's the property line here, and so you can see that the operation to the west impedes on the property. The fence line has already been moved in, I believe I've been told about seven feet. And then the, the, the two property owners are working together for a certified survey map to adjust that property line to match up with that new fence line that's gonna be coming in the next month or two to the plan commission, so that's, I'm gonna clean that area up as well. So that's essentially all I have on this one. The conditions are the plan of operation, as I mentioned, and then our standard site plan, plan of operation conditions.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Spielman, are you here?
Yes, sir, Han Spielman, S, South One-Seven, West Two-Two-Six-Five-Five, Lincoln Avenue.
Can you get a little closer to the mic so we can-
Sorry.
Yep, thank you. You have anything to add to what Mr. Malarky just said?
Uh, no, it's primarily, as you mentioned, a service and repair business for elevators. Most of the work obviously takes place at other buildings around the area.
So you're using this basically as a base?
Exactly, base, base-
Show up in the morning and leave and come back?
Yeah, a couple of office staff, sales supervisors, and then the field technicians are out and about.
Okay. Any questions from the plan commission?
Malarky, would you give us the motion, pose it, please?
The motion would be the village of Waukesha Plan Commission, it says approves, it should be recommends approval of the site plan, plan of operation request for Han Spielman, doing business as Express Elevator LLC for the property located at South Seventeen, West Twenty-Two-Six-Five-Five, Lincoln Avenue, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five-three-one-eight-six, subject to the conditions of my staff report.
Do we have a motion to affect the plan commission?
I say move.
I second it, I need my trustee determined, seconded by commissioner Eckers. All those in favor, taking by my saying aye. Aye. Posed? Carries?
Thank you.
Village Board, we have a recommendation to accept the, the plan commission, remove. Trustee Grecky, move, seconded by- All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries? Okay, number eighteen, discussion and possible action on Fox River Christian Church, Certified Survey Map and Site Plan, Plan of Operation Amendment, Request for petitioner Mark Roberts for the property located at South Forty-six, West Two-Forty-One-Thirty, Lawnsdale Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five-three-one-eight-nine, Tax Key W A K T, one-three-eight-four-nine-nine-eight, and W A K T, one-three-eight-four-nine-nine-four, for the purpose of approval of a certified survey map to combine the two existing lots owned by the church and approval of a site plan, plan of operation amendment to construct the sixty-by-hundred-foot, six-thousand-square-foot storage building west of the existing parking lot. Mr. Malarky, you're up again.
And so the total property with the combined lots would be about thirty-eight acres. The church has been on the site since about two, I think it's two thousand. There is a master plan that was, that's on, that's on file that we have, it's part of the application as well, for the, for the total build out of the property, including a future building addition to the west side of the church, the accessory building, parking lot expansion and soccer fields. The location of the proposed accessory building that we'll get to is west of the expanded parking that's not yet been constructed. Last time they were in front of us was in May twenty-eighteen to construct a new atrium on the church itself. I don't have much in terms of the certified survey map, except that the signature block needs to be updated with, you know, current village president and current village clerk. In addition, the Waukesha, city of Waukesha extraterritorial jurisdiction signatures should be removed from the certified survey map. Chris, do you have any comments on the CSM?
I do, on the CSM, I only have two, and I just clicked off of that, so I apologize. Real simple, the point of beginning should be labeled on page one, and then also on page one, there's a note mentioning a twenty-foot trail easement. It's our understanding that that trail easement has not been recorded and was part of Waukesha County's, I guess, desire during the original stormwater management planning of the site ten or fifteen years ago. So we recommend that that trail easement be recorded with the CSM and a copy provided to the village.
Do, do you want to do both at the same time, or do you want to take action on the CSM and then come to the site plan, plan of operation? Do, do you wanna do both at the same time, or do you wanna take action in the CSM and then come to the site plan, plan of operation?
Well, I, I've thought we should do this quick, do a CSM and get that done and then move on.
Sure.
Just to keep things in an order. I, I believe they were asked to do this a long time ago.
They were. They, they, they were. The, the plans, the master plans that were approved had a note on them that basically says these properties are to be combined.
So let's do a little housekeeping here, I guess, and let's get that done first, so.
Yeah.
Petitioners here?
Sir.
Good to see you, Mr. Khan.
Mark Roberts. And my partner there, yeah. So representing Fox River Christian Church at South Forty Six, Twenty Four One Thirty, Lonsdale Road. So, uh, we do have the trail easement ready to go. It needed to be, the CSM needs to be completed before the trail easement can be done. So, cause it records it on that new CSM, so.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do first, to get the CSM out of the way and.
I just wanted to share that.
Yeah. You're gonna, not gonna ask or talk back there? You're just gonna, okay.
For me not talking is notable.
Thank you. I didn't wanna go there. Plan commission members, any questions? Comments?
This is pretty straightforward. I.
I think so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the certified survey with the conditions and the requirements of the planner and the engineer.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Moved and seconded to approve the CSM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Uh, do we need to go to the village board for the CSM too, right?
Yes.
Okay, village board, do we have a motion to accept a recommendation of the plan commission?
So moved.
Seconds. Okay. Wow, here we have a duel going on. Mr. Grecki has made the motion. Mr. Klinsky is taking credit, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, moving on to the, uh, building.
Right, site plan, plan of operation. The purpose of the site plan, plan of operation amendment is to construct a sixty foot by a hundred foot accessory building. They're gonna use that for storage of sports equipment and groundskeeping equipment and, and that, that type of thing. There's no limit on size, like there was a limit for a residential accessory building. It's just part of their overall. Site plan, plan of operation, um, the original plan's always envisioned a, an accessory building as part of this. It's in a, it's in a slightly different location than it was originally proposed, but, um, from my perspective, that's probably not a big deal. You can see on the overhead, it's, it's, um, northwest of the, the future parking lot. This entire parking lot doesn't exist, but this kinda shows the build out of the parking in this area, so it would be located outside of that area. I have a couple of comments here of note. Architecture, um, what's being proposed here? In your packet, you saw a building with some masonry that's associated with it. They did include that in the application. However, they're requesting not to have to do the masonry as part of this. Um, as you know, our, our code does require some kind of finished materials. Fifty percent of the facades facing the road for these storage buildings of some type of brick decorative masonry, et cetera, or, or other material. Finished facade is approved by the plan commission and board. Instead, what they're asking is to line the entire building with evergreen trees. Everything but the east, east side. Um, there's some evergreen trees and some, also some canopy trees. We do have landscape requirements as well for new buildings on foundations, and so this would meet that requirement and exceed that requirement. And they'd provide some additional screening of the building itself with, uh, with these evergreens. So they're asking for consideration, um, in the application itself, it talked about a variance. It's, it's not actually a variance. It'd just be a modification from our, our, our normal requirements of site plan, plan of operation. There is a provision in there that does allow modifications for unusual, uh, unique or existing site conditions that would impede, impede full compliance. Their application talks about the fact that you can't view the, the accessory building from one sixty-four based on topography. Uh, in addition, it's, it's quite a distance away from Lonsdale Road, so I'll let them speak to the rationale and the reasons for that, but I just wanted to point out what the, what the rules are.
Well, just as Sean just said, from one sixty-four, you can't even see this building's site for the metal building. So, yes, it is facing that, but it is totally, uh, obscured. And then from Lonsdale Road, aye, it is, uh, nine hundred and fifty-six feet from that road. So either with the trees or building a berm thirty feet, forty feet south of the building that with trees on top of that berm or shrubbery on top of that berm would completely hide that from Lonsdale Road as well. So those are the two considerations that we brought forward.
Okay, just. In the past, we've always had all buildings that are pretty much compatible with the original building. So are you gonna be putting a steeple and a cross on this building?
No.
Plan commission, anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And there's a lot of, a lot of times people, you know, that's why it's in our codes, that a lot of people would like to exclude that portion of it for cost reasons or, you know, and, and, uh, use landscaping to, to kind of shield that effect. And by the very fact that you're trying to use landscaping to shield, it gives me the idea that it doesn't look really that, all that attractive, you know? So having some stonework, I, staying with that initial plan, I think is, in my mind, should continue, should continue with that thought.
And so, yeah, the, they don't specify the exact species and size of the trees, but I, even if you go with the smallest variety of trees you can put in, and that's the lowest number of points. They have a hundred and ninety, um, hundred and ninety points where a hundred and twenty-eight points are required. And if they do a medium sized tree, they're gonna far exceed that, so it, it is in excess of what's normally required for screening. They, they just have to provide the hundred and thirty-two points, I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-eight points and then do this. So they could do less, yes. Not in half necessarily, but.
I think being older perhaps helps because a lot of things I saw when I was a child that they cut corners on doesn't look too, too good this many years later, and I'm probably one of the older ones besides John Macy here. And that may be incorrect, too. So, so I like, I like the, uh, permanent look of the stone, and I know the cost is there. We just built a house, so I certainly know what that costs, but I also think that it, it's an improvement to the property overall. And we can't just look at how it looks today, but how is it gonna look in forty, fifty, sixty years from now? So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Also, when you put trees on a berm, it's, they struggle until they really get a lot of attention. It's just nature of things when you set up a new berm.
It doesn't. It has to be facing the streets and then wrap around twenty-five feet. So it, it's essentially what they have shown is what it would have to be. Right. Okay. Yeah, I mean, what they have shown is, is what meets the code in terms of requirements without it, without a modification. And, and so it sounds like you're saying, well, if you just provide on the south side, well, that's probably enough.
Yeah, that's my theory, is we have to stick with kind of what the code says.
That works.
Would it have to wrap around, or could it just be limited to that facade? Well, I, I do, but I wanna make sure we got the architecture straight. Just for the south side? And the tw- and the wraparound from the south side? Okay, so the, and then what about the landscaping? Because they provided extra landscaping on the plan. So would the, would the requirement for landscaping would just meet, to meet the hundred and thirty-two required points for landscaping? And if they wanna do more, they could do more. Alright, so the motion would be Village of Waukesha Plan Commission recommends to the village board approval of the site plan, plan of operation amendment request. The property located at South Forty Six, West Twenty Four One Thirty, Lonsdale Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, subject to the following conditions. The conditions of the existing site plan, plan of operation approvals for the property remain in effect, except as amended by the conditions of this approval. Comply at all times with the plans presented tonight, um, except as further restricted or modified herein. And so here's where we would modify it herein to be landscaping would only need to meet the hundred and, the required hundred and thirty-two points. Masonry would only need to be on the south elevation of the building and wrap around twenty-five feet on the east and west sides. The plan of operation should not be in full force and effect until the certified certified map is, is recorded, and that's important because they can't put this building on the other property without a principal use, and the rest are standard site plan, plan of operation conditions.
I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I will second after.
So moved and seconded. Is there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Village board, do we have a recommendation acceptance from the, from the village board, from the plan commission?
So moved.
I recommend we, the board, accept the, uh, recommendation of the plan commission.
Mr. Klinsky has made the motion to accept the recommendation of the plan commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Grecki has made a second. All those in favor say aye. Hang on one second.
I just have a little bit of disagreement with this because we just approved a sixty by a hundred whole building, uh, eight acre partial. It was an all metal building with sliding doors, and now we're making this person do a facade or brick face across, what is it?
It's a hundred. It'd be a hundred on the south facings. Yeah.
A hundred feet on the south facing. So I guess, well, and this is a thirty-eight acre partial. I just don't know how we just did this.
Was it the other one that you called small building?
It's an eight acre zone.
And this is thirty, so?
This is thirty-eight acre.
But it's a commercial. What is the zoning?
Well, it.
It's a thousand feet off the road. No, I'm, I know the motion was made, and I just had the voice my opinion on this.
Motion on the floor. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Uh, Mr. Klinsky, well, this was the plan commission. No, this was the village board, I'm sorry, yes. All those, uh, see, we have one, two, four in favor, one against. Trustee, uh, German, against.
We understand. We can live with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question? Just work with Sean on the revised CSM.
The revised plan, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we say again, you know, thank you. It's, you know, really important for us to be a partner and, you know, keeping our property, you know, making the town look as, as well as it can too. Hundred percent for that, so. Thanks for your, for your help.
If you wanna put the steeple up on there, that's fine with me, too.
Um, am I hearing a donation that's coming for a steeple now, like?
Are you hearing what?
A donation.
I can't hear you.
Number nineteen, discussion and possible action on J M Electrical Contractors Site Plan, Plan of Operation. Request for petitioner John Mike Mickel.
Michael.
Was it right that first time?
Michael.
Michael, okay. Doing business as J M Electrical Contractors LLC for the property located at South Forty, West Two Forty One Sixty, Rockwood Way, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine, it should be. Tax key W A K T one three eight one nine 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 zero zero five for approval of a site plan, plan of operation to operate an electrical contractor business, including office and storage space for materials and equipment. Mr. Malarki.
Yeah, this is a, a property with an existing building on it. Um, it's, it's zoned industrial, limited industrial district. The building itself is, um, nine thousand square feet. It's got two floors of office space and then a double height open warehouse area. The last time the property was used is for a small welding business, um, on the site. Their operation, their proposed plan of operation, they're not changing anything in the site at this time. It would be, as you mentioned, electrical contracting, including, including office and storage. Maximum number of employees would be twenty. They would have, um, up to five pickup trucks, six work vans, one dump truck, one delivery truck, and one boom truck. Hours of operation would be seven AM to five PM. Parking requirements for this, um, based on our code would be a total of twenty-seven spaces. They, based on their plan of operation, they have twenty employees. Um, the company vehicles would also be parked in a lot of various times. There's no, the parking lot is partially asphalt and, and, and partially gravel. Um, it is existing. There's some parking along the building, but there's some loading docks in other, in other areas. There's some striped parking. Not, the whole lot's not striped, and so I, I basically did a calculation, um, based on a layout of typical parking spaces and twenty-four foot drive aisles between the parking. I, I estimate they could get about thirty-five, five to forty vehicles in an orderly layout on the site. And so I, I believe it would meet the requirements of the ordinance, um, as I mentioned, and not proposing any upgrades to the parking lot at this time. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. The petitioners, do you have anything to add, or?
I'm a Joel Tysoe representative for J M Electrical Contractors.
I'm gonna move a little closer to the microphone and give your name and address for the record here.
Joel Tysoe, representative for J M Electrical Contractors, S four zero, W two four one six zero, Rockwood Way. Twenty employees. We kinda fluctuate. We never really have, we've never had twenty employees. We're a s- small company. I think we have eight guy, eight field technicians, uh, two project managers, the owner, and then a part-time accountant. Pretty much, um, twenty-four hour service, but normal business hours are seven to five.
Okay, thanks. Plan commission members, any questions for them? Sean, do you have a motion?
Yeah, the motion would be Village of Waukesha Plan Commission recommends to the village board approval of the site plan, plan of operation request for John Mi- uh, Michael doing business as J M Electrical Contractors LLC for the property located at South Forty, West Twenty Four One Sixty, Rockwood Way, Waukesha, Wisconsin, five three one eight nine. Subject to the following conditions, and again, I, we listed the plan of operation, complying at all times with the plans specified tonight. Satisfying any conditions that we may have, and then the rest are standard site plan approval conditions.
Okay, do we have a motion from the plan commission to the effect?
I so moved, all these Sean's.
Moved by trustee German, seconded by commissioner Heckers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Do we have a recommendation to accept the plan commission's recommendation from the village board, please?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Grecki, seconded by trustee Klinsky. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sure this one's gonna break everybody's heart, but I'm gonna ask for the adjournment of the plan commission. Which buildings?
Which buildings? Well, because that's discretion.
Well, they both did, but we changed the siding on the one too. We can, do you have the dis-
One's a commercial.
One's a commercial building, one's an ag building.
And the ag buildings have to, the accessory buildings like the ag are, that's why you keep saying, does it look like the main building? Does it comply, you know, it's a different standard than the commercial.
See, I thought I did a pretty good job of waiving the steeple requirement for the, you know, I thought it was nice, so. Getting back to the adjournment of the Plan Commission, I didn't see anybody jump into that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is a second. Moved by Commissioner Buchholz, seconded by Commissioner Piala to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Never is one. You want a break? Okay, Mr. Gurecki would like a break, we'll take one. Be back here in 10 minutes.
After Vicki reminded me how old I was, I had to go to the bathroom.
I hope, thanks.
Held out as long as it can. Sean, I punted, you weren't here. Vicki asked a question of why some buildings require the stone. Commercial versus ag or accessory structure.
Oh, well, there's two different sets of ordinance, there's two different sections. One is the site plan, plan of operation.
I'll get there.
Everything for residential. And the other is just the general compatibility section that applies to, I'm sorry, residential and ag accessory buildings. So there are two different sections of the code.
Yes, to grow.
Lot to take in the first meeting, right? But you've sat in on some meetings, you know some of the stuff.
I just have the te- telecommunication thing. First, tonight.
I, yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking, yeah.
The hours of operation, yeah, I. So, so what, so what happens now? Yeah, just send me, and I, you know, come back to Plan Commission. Yeah, once we have a document, then I'm gonna send it to you. Yeah, just send me the, once, once you give me the discussion. Show me all that. Well, not even five, just expand, just combine your under part. How's the 720? Is that it? How's the 720 down there?
How is it?
Your brother showed me, your brother showed me pictures. I showed you all my picture already. Calling you. I'm sure.
Let's get back to work here. Uh, village board continues, approval of previous meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last, November 11th meeting, rather?
So moved.
Moved in sec, not moved in second, I'm sorry, moved by trustee Gurecki to approve the minutes of the November 11th meeting. Is there a second? I will second that. All those that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, they carry. Approval of the December 1st special meeting. I will move to approve the minutes from the December 1st meeting, is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee German seconded that. All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you.
Because I don't have enough information.
You're wholeheartedly correct, yes. Number 22, discussion and possible action. Resolution 2021 dash R dash 06. Amendment of 2022 budget expenditures to purchase real estate and road project budget. We need two-thirds vote of the village board required. Madam Clerk, do you have that resolution?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. The first, the first part of the resolution deals with the purchase of real estate. We need to move $400,000 from the fund balance into the general government capital outlay for the purchase of the building. And the second part of the amendment, the resolution deals with moving $40,000 from the fund balance into the public works capital outlay to cover the difference in the cost from the actual amount due for the road project this summer and what was in the budget. The budget was $155,000 and the project came out to just over $193,000. So we were 40,000 short on that project.
Yeah, if you remember, the, we came in, under the bid, we came in less than the bid, but we still were over budget, so we have to amend the budget to reflect that. Any questions or any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2021 dash R dash 06.
It's, motion's been made by trustee German to accept the resolution, approve the resolution. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Seconded by trustee Klinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
I'm gonna abstain due to lack of information.
Due noted.
The record needs to reflect that we had four votes, we meet the super majority requirement.
Four votes in favor. Four, yes. Okay, and B, resolution 2021 dash R dash 07. A resolution authorizing the village president and clerk treasurer as authorized signers. We need a motion to that effect.
I'll move to approve resolution R dash 07.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Gurecki to approve resolution R dash 7, seconded by trustee German. All those in favor, say, by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. SMJT dash mobile wireless telecommunications facility modification request for petitioner Drew Napke, Nappeck. Doing business as SMJ International for T-Mobile for the property located at South 42 West 22080 Beeheim Road, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53189. Tax key W A K T 1389991002 for approval of a modification to an existing wireless communication facility to install a standby generator system, automatic transfer switch, generator auxiliary power distribution, and remote monitoring communication circuitry within the existing ground compound.
Do you have to bring that to us?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just give a brief overview, I haven't been part of these in the past because it's been board-only meetings, but very simply, it's a 80 kilowatt diesel generator. It's on a six foot by 12 foot precast concrete bed. It's in the southeast corner of the south tower here on Beeheim Road. You guys looked at a modification a couple, month or two ago about the same exact tower, I believe it was even T-Mobile, about antennas that got added. Normally wireless communication towers are conditional uses, aside from non-substantial modifications, those are not. They're approved by the board. The applicant provided an application including rationale as to why it's not a substantial modification per the state statutes. Being that it doesn't increase the height of the tower, doesn't increase the width of the tower, doesn't increase the, the equipment compound size. If you look at the overhead, you can see in the, here's the compound we're talking about, there's, this is the generator location. That's effective in the, the other equipment that was mentioned, that's, that's part of that. So you have 45 days to approve the application based on the complete determination. The application was submitted and determined to be completed on October 29th. That gives us until December 13th to make a determination on this particular application, so. I believe it meets the requirements for being non-substantial, and so you need to make the determination as well.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do we have any comments on this, questions?
That's an offensive area, right?
That is offense, correct.
Yeah, they've been there a long time already, I guess, it's.
It's a standby, it's a standby generator.
Which is pretty standard for these operations where the power goes out, they need to have something to back it up.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification for SMJT mobile wireless telecommunications.
Very well put, David, I gotta give that.
I'll second that motion.
Trustee Gurecki seconds the motion from trustee German. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. Okay, public works capital outlay purchase of Tiger Extreme Duty flail mower package for $49,840. This was brought to my attention by Jerry, we, the mower that we have on that tractor has been limping along for years. It's finally to the point now where it's not even doable any longer. We have it in the budget for next year, I brought it up to get approved this year because we can save about $2,000, $3,000 on a price increase that's going to be coming along the 1st of Jan- two, three thousand dollars on a price increase that's gonna be coming along the first of January. So my idea was to get it approved tonight, they will, they will honor the price today and we don't have to pay for it till next year when we get it installed. So the idea here was to save some money for the town, for the village, rather, and that's why I put it on the agenda for tonight. Any discussion, questions on that?
So, could you repeat that, so we have it installed in twenty twenty-one yet?
They'll, not necessarily, we'll take delivery of it whenever, they'll, they'll pick, yeah, they're gonna get the tractor, I don't know when they'll come and get the tractor. You know, the, the, we're into December already, if they came and got it tomorrow, they probably won't be back here till next year sometime. Hopefully, hopefully by the first of June when we need it, so, is the goal, but. The idea, I, why I pushed this a little long, a little quicker is because I wanted to save the money, the price increases. And that's the way everything is going these days, is the prices are being jacked up on a regular basis. So I did talk to the salesman with Jerry and Chris together on speakerphone and he said he would honor this after tonight yet, this, this price, so that's what we need to do, or what you guys need to decide, do we wanna do this now?
So this goes outside of our capital plan?
No, this is our capital plan for next year, cause we won't have to pay for it till next year, when we, and it's in the capital plan for next year.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, that's good, good, good point, Mike.
Do, what's the service rate?
The, the past one, the tractor was bought, we think in about nineteen ninety-two, and that mower was installed on that tractor then.
From nineteen ninety-two?
Pardon me?
Ninety-two to now.
Yep, the tractors in ninety-two and that mower was put on that tractor when it was bought, no, so, so the mower is in ninety-two, so thirty years.
We rebuilt that mower like three or four times.
It's been patched together and it's to the point now, you can't get parts for it any longer for that series, so there's no parts available. Uh, I remember Jerry sent this thing out to the east coast, some guy out there said he could rebuild it, he turned around and sent it back, said he couldn't, so. It's been around the world already and it's.
It's threadbare?
It's pretty much done.
Yeah.
He, Jerry actually patched it together a couple of years ago and it's, I don't know if anybody saw the job it's doing, but it leaves part of the weeds in the grass when he does cut it now, cause it's not, it's done. I don't know what else to put it, but.
And the old one that's just going to scrap?
They offered five hundred dollars for it for scrap, basically, to take it. And I don't know if we wanna do that yet, or if somebody wants to pay more than that for it, then we'll do that, but at this point, that's all that's worth on the trade-in.
And based on Dave and Bob, your experience with equipment like this, five hundred dollars on something like that, that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, I don't know what the scrap price is per pound these days, but that's.
It's a mailbox post.
Yeah, it's, it's in bad shape, I looked at it here two months ago already, so.
I'll move to approve the expense?
I'll second that. Moved by trustee Guerkey, seconded by trustee German to purchase the, uh, flail mower for forty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I was just gonna say, is that, are we gonna decide what we wanna do with the old one now, or just wait?
Uh.
I mean, if they're gonna give us five hundred dollars for it, is there, are, are we gonna take that, or we're just gonna?
You gotta give more?
Take our chances and see if you can get more.
Well, the, we have that option, I mean, we can.
Well, that's what I'm saying, are we gonna?
We can check it out, I mean, I, I don't have anybody beating the door down for it, if that's what you mean at this point, but if somebody knows somebody that wants to buy it for that.
We buy it from you then.
Well, you.
We gave you seven hundred.
Seven hundred?
So we, we get, you get it more?
Can we get seven fifty?
Do you have, it's turned this into an auction here.
Not on the agenda.
No, no, we can talk. Okay, moving on. Oh, did we vote? Yeah, we did, never mind.
Yep.
Uh, provisional operator's license for Nicole O'Kent for Neighbor's Bar and Grill. Is the petitioner here or no, she's not here? Do we have anything on her, Chris? That was the one, okay. Okay, these, all those in signify by saying aye for. I'm looking for a motion, if there's discussion, go ahead. We have a, there's nothing on, or?
Background check is not completed?
It's fine, yes.
There was no records for the day.
No, no, there's nothing there.
And you completed that, Chris?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I saw it. No, I saw it too, it's, right, I know what you're saying.
Yep.
Yep. It's done.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the request for bartender's license for Nicole.
Trustee Buchholz made a motion to accept Nicole O'Kent, is there a second?
I'll second.
You guys are in stereo.
I know.
Okay, we'll give that one to trustee German. We're gonna spread the wealth around a little bit here, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. We have an appeal for an operator's license denial at, from Matthew Brett for Tally's Tap and Eatery. You were here?
Matthew Brettel, sorry.
Okay. Do we?
Well, and you wanna introduce yourself?
Jessica Tellinger, owner-operator, here for moral support and any other questions you may guys have.
Okay.
Okay, well, the procedure is under chapter one twenty-five, uh, point one-two, you don't have an absolute right to a new license. Um, and they have to just give reasons and indicate to the person. And we've always recommended that after that, they'd be given an opportunity, if they wish to appear, to present, uh, their position as to why the license should be issued. So this is your opportunity to, both of you, the owner and, and to indicate, uh, you know, how long it's worked for you previously, you know, why you're asking that for the license, and gentlemen, you can certainly, uh, represent anything you think the board needs to know before they question you in this regard.
Um, well, I've been a bartender for about seven, eight years, most of it in Iowa and Nebraska. I guess they're not as strict down there with licenses as they are up here. Um, but, um, basically, I'm just applying for my bartending license so I can bartend at Tally's and close down the bar and I understand I was a bit of a fool when I was a younger man, but I'm, I'm no longer that person. Uh, basically, I'd just like to be able to be gainfully employed.
What was the timeframe when you were in Iowa, tending bar?
Um.
Nebraska, when was the last time out there?
Probably started around two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, I wanna say.
In Nebraska?
Yeah, Iowa and Nebraska, western Iowa.
Any questions, comments from anybody here?
I would just like to add.
Go ahead.
That our staff is held to a higher standard than just, um, what the community has decided. Like, for instance, in Waukesha, there's sober bartending, uh, for the city, the village does not have that rule, but my staff is held to that standard. No matter whether server, bartender, cook, there is a strict policy which I'm happy to provide you with. Um, I don't have it on me, but I can obviously forward it on to you, um, that people are sober at time of entry and time of exit. Um, if any, um, purchase of drink is offered for a employee, they're able to take a chip for their downtime to come into work. Matthew's been with us since end of the summer as a server, he has been responsible, hasn't missed a shift, we haven't had any issues. Um, he has been, um, very solid and as I'm sure most of you guys know, the labor market for people in our situation has been pretty hectic this past year. We're in the middle of rebuilding our team, um, I wouldn't be here standing next to him if I didn't feel he was responsible enough to handle this. Um, I know previously, um, I had a situation with another coworker a few years ago, um, that came before the board. And I would suggest if you're not comfortable, um, that maybe going back to the situation with Dustin Davis where you guys had a provisionary license and then at renewed time, if there were no issues at that point, then we can move forward with a regular license. That would be my personal recommendation, based on what we've had in the past. Um, you know, people aren't banging down the door for these jobs right now, um, I'm short to have to at least four people in the kitchen. Um, I'm closed one day a week that I'd like to be opened, but I'm working six days a week and would prefer to have mental sanity, so that's why I'm closed on the seventh. Um, so there is room for Matthew either place with whatever decision you guys make, but I feel that, um, he's proven himself to be responsible towards us and a lot of the issues were many years ago, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think one of the questions that we had, if you could clarify, Mr. Brettel, one of the questions on the application asks, and I wanna be very clear, have you ever been convicted of a felony? You indicated no, is that a, a, an accurate answer?
Well, I was told that if it happens more than ten years ago, I didn't have to disclose it, apparently that's not the case. Few people, like my brother was one of them, but I realize he's not an authority figure on the subject. And I was just, that's just what I was led to believe, if that's incorrect, then I apologize.
It's incorrect, there's no, there's no timeframe stated on the, the application for that, for that question. Um, so to clarify, the question asks, have you ever been convicted of a felony and you indicated no?
That is correct, um, like I said, though I didn't, my intention wasn't to mislead, I thought that I just was within my rights not to have to disclose it. I apologize for that.
I'm gonna weigh in a little bit here because I, the case that you're talking about, is his name Davis, you said?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember his exact name, but that was the same kinda situation, I believe, wasn't it?
It was, it was very similar.
Yeah.
As far as the issues. Um, Dustin's were actually more recent than Matthew's, his were, I don't quote me, and he is no longer an employee of ours, um, but they were within the past ten years and I don't have Matthew's record in front of me, but from my understanding, these were, um, early to, early two thousands. Um, so obviously, like, we all grow up, I did some stuff when I was younger that, you know, I'm not so proud of, but I'm an adult now and I've grown up and grown out of those phases of life and I now run a business with forty-two employees and everybody has the ability to change.
Well, I, getting back to what I started to say here is I was probably the guy that brought up the fact that I believed in second chances and I, and I came up with the idea then that he should be on probation for, was it thirty days?
Um, you had said until the next renewal.
Is that what it was, I can't remember all the details of it.
Yeah, so you had issued him.
And that worked out, he, he didn't have a problem.
He did not.
We put him on there and he got his license. And I'm willing to, to do that again.
Okay.
In my opinion, I mean, it, I'm one of the guys up here, that worked out that time and I, and you, you do run a very well-run business down there with hardly any problems that I'm aware of, so.
Thank you.
I'm willing to do that again, I don't know if the rest of you guys would feel that same way, but I'm all about second chances, people do mess up when they're younger, I have never done that, so. I'm not.
You were talking about another employee that had a, a similar issue?
Yes.
Yes.
And that employee is no longer with you?
Yes.
Can you tell us why that employee is no longer with you?
He was a general manager and, um, we were growing at a rapid pace and he just really didn't fit the mold of us expanding with different employees. He, um, wanted to stay strictly in the kitchen, I needed him to be able to bounce back and forth to kitchen, front of house, it just was no longer a good fit. My husband and I are trying not to have to work as many hours as we've been working, so we have been growing our management staff. So he is actually, was terminated earlier, I think in May, and since then, we have brought on two more front-of-house managers and a kitchen manager. Um, and we feel like we're a stronger team now as far as training and onboarding people. Um, because post-COVID, you know, a lot of people moved on to different industries because there were better opportunities open with less education requirements than there were before because a lot of people didn't wanna go back to work and it strained our industry so very badly. Um, so that's why we kinda made some adjustments.
Do we recall that previous employee, did he also, um, answer a question on the application incorrectly, or was?
That, I don't remember.
Was based on his record, to the base of my recollection.
Yeah. I mean, the record for these two.
Issues are.
Yeah, they were very similar.
Oh, we have a copy of the report, I thought everyone would have had it in certain.
Yeah, you can look at it.
We don't generally like to read them.
I don't wanna do that in public, it's not.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
And you say you have a, a sober, uh, policy?
Yes, we don't allow alcohol consumption or drug consumption at work.
Okay, so that, that's a total prohibition, that's not just like some, like twenty oh eight or?
No, absolutely none. It's a job, not a hobby.
Two thousand seven, I think.
Four two?
Can't see if I can get back. It's seven o'clock, it's good.
Last thing? Four seven, or seven? Same nature?
No.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm kinda with the president in terms of the second chances, my, my, uh, what gives me pause is that you weren't upfront about it on the application, that, that's what gives me pause.
I understand that, um, had I had a more thorough and official knowledge of what I am required to disclose, I, again, I was given falsified information about.
Well, question one, were you ever, right?
It's true, I was also told that it, if it's at more than ten years ago, you can just ignore that, no, it doesn't come up, which is obviously not the case. So I was just incorrect.
That, frankly, that was my concern, I'm also concerned about the nature. Um, having some experience in, in taverns and what goes on, seeing the nature, um, you know, of what was disclosed or what was discovered. Um, the fact that it wasn't mentioned initially, uh, those are the things that, that, that give me caution. Um, I've tried, uh, to hire employees personally, so I know what a struggle that is. Um, it sounds like there are other positions available in the kitchen as well that you mentioned, is that correct? So, and that might, that might be a better fit, um, at least for the short run, until, uh, you know, perhaps sometime down the road, a new application can be submitted for the bartender's license, so, just thinking aloud.
I'd just like to reiterate, I'm no longer that person, I don't engage in anything of that nature at all, period, haven't done for twenty years. Um, completely different person now. Um, I have no kitchen experience. I'm a, I'm a bartender, server.
Any time store, or you're good? Okay. Uh, can we make a motion on this genre?
Yeah, you have to make a motion to approve or not to approve. If it's not to approve, we, we need to give the reasons why it's not.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to do the same thing I did last time, make you on probation until you prove yourself. Uh, once it screw up and it's, it's over.
It's absolutely fine.
Is that a yearly? Wanna put a time limit on it, or?
Uh, what, we do, you said it's.
Do they expire at the end of?
In the June?
June thirtieth.
Yep. Okay. Till, will we say the first of July then, or something to that effect?
Well, it'll expire at the end of June and he, and I think.
Is there a specific date, or just the third, June thirtieth, okay.
But let, let's clarify that he's required to come back in on the renewal, cause oftentimes renewals are just lists. And in these cases, you usually require him to come back, obviously, if his employer's willing to come, that's always helpful. And if he, if he re- applies, he's required to appear and he's required to present proof. and he's required to present proof that there's been no other issues.
So just to clarify, that would be at the renewal meeting for all the licenses and bartending licenses would be the time we come back?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But as you know, we don't require everybody who's renewing to come back.
I'm aware. I just want to make sure that it's in the record and that that's the rules we're going by for this situation. If that is approved.
It wouldn't even count as a renewal because he doesn't carry one now. It would be a new license.
Last time, we, I believe, applied for, we had gotten a different colored card. And it said, like, preliminary or probationary to expire on. And then we, when we reapplied, I don't know if you guys had it marked as a renewal or a new license. I can't remember, but we can follow whatever guidance you give us.
Yeah, I believe he comes back in and asks for a license again as of 30th of June.
Okay.
The new one.
No problem.
And then we'll review it and see how things went. And you can wholeheartedly be here. I would appreciate that, I think, at that point.
Would you mind being nicer than moving people like us to the front of the meeting? Because that was not fun.
Move you to where?
I'm just joking around, to the front of the meeting.
Beginning of the meeting? Next time, how's that?
I'm going to hold you to that.
Because I probably won't be president by that time, so. Okay.
I'm going to second Bob's motion.
All right.
Give him up to July 31st, or June 31st?
June 30th.
June 30th?
June 30th, yes. Probationary.
Probationary license.
Yep. Okay, it's, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the other end of the table very well.
Aye.
Tom? No? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, we have three, four, two against. It passes, so.
Thank you very much.
I'll work on getting you in the front of the line next time. How's that?
I appreciate that. And then would we just come pick that up from the clerk next week?
Yes, next week would be great.
Are you the new lady?
I'm the new clerk, yes.
Nice to meet you, I'm Jess.
Yes, nice to meet you.
We have a lot of new people up here this night.
I met them, did you guys scare away the other guy? I met him, and now he's gone, too.
Which guy?
I don't know, the other guy that was in the office.
Oh, the clerk?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gone, gone.
Oh, wow. There's a lot of turnover.
This is a revolving door around here lately, so, but... Not anymore. The door has stopped. So, moving on. Fire Department trailer donation. I will read the letter from the fire department. Says, Dear Board of Trustees, the members of the Village of Waukesha Fire Department voted on and purchased an enclosed trailer with the intent on replacing the existing trailer utilized to transport our ATV. The existing trailer had reached the end of its service life and was at the limit of its ability to safely transport the ATV and additional equipment. The department has several other capital priorities, and the membership found an opportunity to invest in the department using donated funds. The new trailer was purchased using funds from our separate donation account that were obtained through membership fundraiser activities, primarily our annual pancake breakfast fundraiser. Purchase was made possible by the graciousness of the citizens and businesses of the Village of Waukesha and surrounding communities. Village of Waukesha ordinance, chapter 16 dash 16, section 22, requires all fire department equipment to be owned by the town, now the village. Pursuant to this ordinance, the membership of the fire department voted and approved donating the newly purchased trailer, which had a purchase price of $11,470 to the village to be used solely by the fire department. Please accept this small donation on behalf of the fire department, membership, citizens, and community. We look forward to utilizing this new tool to enhance our service to the community. Respectfully, Derek Hurley, Deputy Chief, Village of Waukesha Fire Department. Okay, guys, that's from the fire department, and it's on behalf of them.
We need a motion to accept the donation.
Okay, we need a motion to accept that donation?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Gurecki.
Second.
Second by trustee Buchholz.
Let me just explain, in part, it got here because they came in and asked for us to register it, asked the village to register the vehicle. You don't own it. And so we, the staff sort of said, I don't think we can register it. And I brought to the attention of everybody that, in actuality, we should make it clear who owns it in going forward in case there's any issues for insuring it and things like that. So this is the proper procedure, and thanks for putting it on and following the members.
Okay. And on behalf of the board, thanks to the fire department for that, so. Did we vote? No. No. Sorry. It's moved and seconded, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Again, here we go. Reduction on letter of credit. Petitioner Eddie Milliken, Legend at Merrill Hills. I take it, Chris, this is your deal?
This is. So the Legend at Merrill Hills is pretty much done with their work. They've requested a letter of credit reduction and acceptance of improvements. Eddie Milliken is the agent for the owner at the Legends. He was kind of the guy that was running the project. I have a letter dated December 6th. And I'll kind of just go through and read that so you kind of have a comfort feeling of what's going on. Substantial completion of the development occurred last August, August 11th, 2020. As of August 11th, 2021, the 14-month guarantee period has expired. We have reviewed the public improvements and found that they have been completely completed satisfactorily, and we did not have any other punch list items to report. Therefore, we recommend the village accept public improvements within the development. These improvements would include the extension of Sun Valley Trail, the emergency access at Oak Knoll Drive, and the stormwater improvements made within Merrill Hills Parkway. In addition to that, for the letter of credit reduction, it is our understanding that the current letter of credit is in the amount of $81,900. The developer is requesting a reduction in the letter of credit in that same amount. Again, the developer's agreement stipulates that the letter of credit remain in place for the 14-month warranty period. As I mentioned, that 14-month warranty period has expired. There are no other issues or outstanding items that need to be constructed or addressed. So since that guarantee period has expired and all improvements have been made, we recommend that the full reduction in the letter of credit amounting to $81,900 be granted so that there's no dollars remaining. And that is all I have.
Okay, thanks.
I will take Christopher's motion that he just stated. The recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by trustee German, seconded by trustee Gurecki to accept the reduction in the letter of credit from petitioner Eddie Milliken in the amount of $81,900. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, Citizens Bank Certificate of Deposit renewal. Chris? This is your thing? I don't know if I told you that or not, but it is now.
Well, you didn't tell me that.
I like surprises once in a while.
Yeah. It's just a formality that the certificate of deposit will be rolling over. It's a six-month deposit. If we want to change the terms or change the amount in the CD, now is the time to do it. Or if you're fine with it, we just let it go and it rolls over, just so you're noted, are aware of.
What is the, 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 how long is it for? What are they paying?
It's six months, it's...
Six months?
Renewal is 12/8/21, and the new maturity date is 3/8/23. Oh, no, it's not. It's two, two years, sorry.
Two years.
And what are they paying on a two-year note?
How much change you got in your pocket?
Not a whole lot. This doesn't specifically say. They won't figure out interest until...
You sign them, huh?
Well, yeah, until...
That's, that's all public.
Eight, yeah.
They didn't stipulate the renewal rate?
No, they say that it won't be figured until after the actual due date of the CD. Oh, which was yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't call the bank and ask for the date. Because I thought it was on the letter.
I thought we talked about it. It was like, not even a percentage or something?
Yeah, like 0.05%. Otherwise, they just roll over and keep it on. I just wanted everybody aware that you have one and that this is what it does.
So there's no action to be taken?
Well, you should make a motion to prove that you're just going to let it roll over if that's what you so choose.
How does the board feel about that, just letting it renew by itself?
You have 10 days after...
10 days to appeal it?
Yes, you have 10 days to take action. They always seem to renew at more than... They're paying...
Market rates.
Yeah, they're paying a little bit more, that's, yeah.
So we just automatically leave it re- renew?
I'll make a motion to automatically renew.
Motion by trustee German to allow the certificate of deposit at Citizens Bank to renew automatically. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by trustee Gurecki. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, appointment of 2022 and 2023 election inspectors. I don't let you guys see this all in your packets. The list.
They were given to you at your place tonight in the chat.
Yep, do you see them? That's okay. Any discussion or questions on any of the people on there?
Only if the parties submitted it.
Bump them?
Oh, remove them?
Yeah, they're not going to, they're not going to... Well, not if, no, this isn't the elect, this, she explained it to me. Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
This isn't just for the next election. This is for the next two year, the next two-year term. It's for 22, 23. So if you are unable or unwilling to do an election, you can still do one at a future date.
It isn't going to help you.
Do we do background checks on these, too?
I think that's probably...
So is there any action to be taken with this, or...
We have to accept them and prove them.
I move to accept the election inspectors has listed.
Motion by trustee Gurecki to accept the election inspectors.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee German. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries? Accounts payable. What was the amount again? I didn't see the bottom of that.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $74,061.15.
I'll second that motion.
It's moved by trustee German and seconded by trustee Gurecki to pay the bills in the amount of $74,061.15. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Here's another sad one, chairman of village board. Who wants to do that?
Was that supposed to be roll call vote, vote on bills?
No, do we, no, we don't have to do that because we used to do it because the past chairman's son was on it. So I don't believe it's required now.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee German to adjourn, seconded by trustee Kalinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, gentlemen. 9:20. Well, if there's, if he's in trouble with the law, I'm pretty sure we're going to find out.